We were conducting business in closed session. All right, welcome to Santa Paula. Call this meeting to order at 6:41. We will have an invocation. We have the Reverend Mari Cefontus. Please join us. And if I can ask you all to stand up and please turn off your phones.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and all those here in the chamber with me this evening, and all those beyond in our virtual community here in Santa Paula, will you pray with me? Gracious, loving God, Spirit of life and of love, by whatever name you call the Holy, we are grateful to be together in this, our beloved, community of Santa Paula. We are grateful for the recent rains which will help restore our land and our trees and our yards and our fields. In this week, when we marked Indigenous People Day on Monday, we are grateful for the long history of this place we now call home, including the Shumash who cared for this land before any of us and who are still among us today. We are grateful for all who have arrived since those early days, who have made this community, which we now have the benefit of and can serve. We pray for the congregations, the schools, and organizations which support us and our lives. We pray for the farmworkers who provide food for our tables and across the nation, and for all those who work for our safety in this community, for all among us. We pray for our mayor, for our city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We are grateful for these leaders who serve our community along with the staff who support them. We pray for the agenda set before them this evening. May our work this evening benefit all of the people of this community and its future. May all beings be safe. May all beings be at peace. In the name of all that is holy, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Can we have a council member, Ornelas, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. The Pledge of Allegiance is required. The United States of America, the people of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you can, please make sure your cellphones are off as we conduct the people's business today. And also, si necesitas aparatos para traducir, por favor venga a ver a la señorita Juliet Latshaw.
They have all been handed out. There's no more left.
Thank you. All right, we are going to roll call.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
Here.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornelas?
Here.
Council or Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
And Mayor Chavez?
We have a closed session report. Ms. Castillo?
Yes, Mayor. Is this mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mayor, closed session report. We council convened this evening in closed session to discuss the matter 4A on the special agenda, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B1, evaluation of city manager. There are no reportable actions taken.
Great, thank you. City Attorney, we're moving to public comments. We have the following individuals that will be speaking today. We'll start with Daniel Melendez, followed by Humberto Cancino. Daniel, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Daniel Melendez. I've lived at the Mobile Estate for five years. My parents have lived there for 40 years. In this day and age that we have where people are sending text messages and emails, tonight I have over 80 letters here written by people, members of our community, residents, homeowners, who took time to write down these letters. I'll present these to you. Now, these are not just numbers or cases on paper. These are families, widows, seniors, veterans, who have written down how this 47% rent increase would affect their life. We have already gone through this process once this year. We have fought the 45 increase, and now we're back here months later because of the ordinance having some loopholes that allows owners to try this again and again. We understand the city council cannot intervene in the current hearing before the Rent Review Commission, but your lack of urgency to schedule these workshops to amend the ordinance is affecting residents now. We took the steps last month to agree, you took the steps last month by agreeing to amend the ordinance, and we thank you for that. Now what we need is the next step. We are asking that the city immediately schedule an inclusive public workshops where residents and park owners can both sit down and share written proposals and actually discuss solutions. We have done our part. We have organized, we documented, we showed up, as you can see. It's time for the city to act and follow through. Please schedule these workshops, and now that no community has to relive this nightmare again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are going on to Humberto Cancino. Humberto? And we're going to have a translation done by Sid Lali. Bienvenido.
Buenos tardes. Mi nombre es Humberto Cancino, y soy residente y propietario de una casa móvil en 400 Mobile Estates desde hace muchos años. Quiero comenzar agradeciéndoles por haber votado el mes pasado para comenzar a enmendar la ordenanza de estabilización de rentas de casas móviles. Esa decisión demostró verdadero liderazgo y reconoció que el sistema actual no está funcionando. Pero mientras enfrentamos otra solicitud de aumento de renta, esta vez del 47%, apenas unos meses después del anterior, queda claro que el tiempo no está de nuestro lado. Cada semana que pasa sin que se programen los talleres es una semana más en la que cientos de propietarios permanecen en la incertidumbre, bajo estrés, y sin saber qué les espera. No estamos pidiendo que el consilio intervenga en el proceso legal. Entendemos que deben mantenerse neutrales, pero el consilio sí tiene el poder y la responsabilidad de crear un proceso transparente incluso para arreglar la ley misma. Necesitamos talleres que vayan más allá de los comentarios de tres minutos, verdaderas sesiones de trabajo donde los residentes, abogados, e incluso los dueños de los parques puedan intercambiar propuestas por escrito y dialogar sobre soluciones. Esta es una oportunidad para que Santa Paula lidere con el ejemplo, para crear una ordenanza que realmente funcione para ambas partes y evite que se repitan crisis como esta. Por favor, programen los talleres ahora. Gracias.
Good evening, council members. My name is Humberto Cancino, and I am a longtime 400 Mobile Estates resident and homeowner. I want to start by thanking you for voting last month to begin amending the mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. That decision showed real leadership and recognition that the current system is broken. But as we face yet another rent increase application, this time 47%, just months after the last one, it's clear that time is not on our side. Every week that passes without the workshops being scheduled is another week that hundreds of homeowners remain in limbo, under stress and unsure of their future. We're not asking the council to intervene in the legal process. We know that must remain neutral. But the council does have the power and the responsibility to create a transparent and inclusive process to fix the law itself. We need workshops that go beyond the typical three-minute comments. True working sessions where residents, attorneys, and even park managers can exchange written proposals and talk through solutions. This is a chance for Santa Paula to lead by example, to create an ordinance that truly works for both sides and prevents repeated crises like this one. Please schedule those workshops now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Humberto. Maria? And Giselle? And in English or Spanish?
In English. Good evening. My name is Maria Cancino. I live at 400 Craig Drive. I lived there for over 20 years. I raised my children there. And tonight, I stand before you again, afraid of losing my home. We went through this exact same fight earlier this year. We thought it was over, that the city had hurt us, but here we are again, months later, facing another massive rent increase from the same company because the ordinance still allows it. This isn't just a legal issue, it's a human one. We're talking about seniors giving medications to afford rent, kids losing sleep because their parents are stressed, and families wondering if they'll be forced to move away from the city. They'll call home for decades. You already voted to amend the ordinance. Thank you for that. But families can't wait months for action. Please schedule the ordinance workshops now. Give us a seat at the table. Let us help you fix this before more families are pushed out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria. Giselle? Valdivinos? And followed by Mauricio Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Giselle Valdivinos, and I've lived at 400 Mobile Estates since 2013. I grew up here, and I would like my son to grow up here as well. I want to thank the council for taking the first step last month to amend and strengthen the mobile home ordinance. The vote showed you're listening to residents. Now I'm here with dozens of my neighbors, asking you to take the next step and make those workshops happen as soon as possible. We're not coming here just to demand change. We're coming with ideas, proposals, and the willingness to work together. Residents and city staff should all be at the same table in a study session format with interpretation and materials for everyone to understand and participate. This process isn't just about one park or one crisis. It's about building stability for years to come and avoiding costly, time-consuming rent battles that drain everyone, residents, the city staff, and even the park management. Please let's set those dates and start the real work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Giselle. Mauricio? Mauricio Cruz?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mauricio Cruz, and I've lived in Santa Paula for, I don't know, it's been years. And in my years of living here, I know Santa Paula has always prided itself on being a community that values family, stability, and fairness. But right now, many families in our mobile home parks are hanging by a thread. We're seeing the same rent increase applications come back again and again because the ordinance hasn't been strengthened. This is not sustainable for residents, for the city, for our shared sense of community. The workshops you committed to are the way forward. They must be open, inclusive, focused on closing the loopholes that have caused so much harm. Every delay sends a message, and we hope that message is not that working families and seniors have to wait while corporate owners keep exploiting the system. Please schedule the workshops now, and let's work together to build lasting protections for the people who call this city home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sid Lali?
Good evening. I'm actually here to read a comment from someone who really wanted to be here, but she had a family emergency. So yeah, I'm reading this on her behalf. Good evening. My name is Graciela, and I've been a resident of Santa Paula West Mobile Home Park for over 10 years now. Even though I'm not from 400 Craig Drive, I'm here because what's happening there could easily happen to us, or any park in Santa Paula. The current ordinance doesn't protect us enough. We've seen rent increases, maintenance issues, and intimidation tactics in our own park too. When one park is under attack, we all feel it. That's why it's so important that the city holds these public workshops soon, not months from now. We need an ordinance that gives real security to all homeowners, not just temporary relief. We need stronger language, clearer protections, and a process that includes residents from all mobile home parks. We stand in solidarity with our neighbors at 400 Craig Drive, and we urge you to schedule the workshops immediately so that every resident in Santa Paula has a fair chance to stay in their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sid Lali. Just so everybody knows, today on our agenda, there is a presentation by our Community and Economic Development Department, which oversees housing. I recommend that you stay for that presentation, which will come up just momentarily. We're moving on to agenda item presentations. For the record, Ms. Latshaw, can we please strike out 7A? And we're moving to 7B.
Yeah, sure. That works. Yeah, that's great. Okay. This is on? Okay, great. My name is Clara Grassi. I'm the Director of Public Transit for the Ventura County Transportation Commission. I was here last month, but I just wanted to follow up. There are some questions about outreach at the last meeting, so that's why I'm here to present this evening. So we have our website up now. You can see on the right. So this is for the Ventura County Short Range Transit Plan. Excuse me, should I start it with that? And so this is a countywide plan, but I'm here to talk about how it relates to the Valley Express Bus Service. So there is a larger project website that VCTC hosts, but this here is a Valley Express website, and we have more detailed information as it relates to the Valley Express service on this website here. You can see here that the website is valleyexpressbus.org/srtp-valley-express. But if you go to the Valley Express Bus website, valleyexpressbus.org, you, there's a pop-up that will direct you to that. So on the website, we have a link to the larger project website, also to the presentation that was presented last month. And then additionally, there are maps of both, more detailed maps of service in both Santa Paula and Fillmore. I'll note that if you scroll down on this page, there are more maps that have detail of the bus stops, which was a question that Councilmember Crosswhite had a question about last year. So all of that can be found there. And then I just wanted to alert everyone to the SRTP outreach event that we're having at the Fillmore Active Adult Center on the 23rd, so Thursday, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Of course, we'll take comments and suggestions anyway, any way people want to provide them, but there is an event, in-person event, happening there. There'll also be a virtual meeting scheduled likely for early November. And then we will also have another one in Camarillo sometime in November as well. But this is, you know, probably the easiest one for people in this community to attend. But we'll take comments through the website, through phone, email, whatever, social media, any way that people want to provide the comments, we're happy to take them. And we'll provide you the website. You can put it on your website as well. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from council members? In regards to these routes, I think I mentioned this before, many of our bus stops or stops don't have any covers?
Yeah.
And we deal with severe weather conditions? Is there anything that's being done to mitigate those situations?
Yes, we have a separate grant related to bus stop improvements, which is also countywide. But first, we're doing an assessment of all of the stops in the entire county to provide recommendations of what all should be done. One thing that we're for sure doing is we will be placing some bus stop signs, new bus stop signs throughout the Valley Express service area. If there are particular stops that you know of in particular that have a lot of people and, you know, could really use a shelter, I think we will probably likely have some additional funds, and we're happy to do that sooner rather than later. So, you know, I think Julie has my contact information, so if, you know, or through the website, however, you can contact me directly, but this goes for the community as well. If there are bus stops people know of in particular, you know, feel free to reach out to us, and we'll all be happy to review that sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Mr. Castillo, can we make sure that the information of the outreach goes in our social media portals? Thanks. All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to invite our Director of Economic Community Development to give us a quarterly report. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this report covers actually a quarter, so June, July, and August for the department. I'll turn it on. So want to talk a little bit about division activity. So far in planning, in the last three months, we've had 34 active projects, nine commercial business licenses, and 10 home occupation permits. One thing that just always amazes me quarter to quarter, month to month, despite of what's happening in the economy or anything else, we always have business growth, and that's exciting for a town as small as we are to have, you know, that's right there is 19 new or renewed businesses. 14 planning applications were received, and that includes a wide array of things. That's anything from signed permits to actual development projects. Building and safety, a lot of, well, I'll touch on a little bit later, but 60 plus or minus inspections a week, and that's, a lot of that is out at Harvest, but it's scattered throughout the community in addition. And then 242 permits issued in the last three months and 51 plan checks, and that's up pretty significantly from last year, and I'll show another slide that shows that. Code compliance, really fortunate that our code inspector right now is doing a lot of building inspections, and back and forth from those inspections, he's identifying code violations and in addition to the calls that we get. I want to point out one thing, we're working on scheduling right now within the next month to start having code inspections on Saturdays. So at least one Saturday a month of code inspector looking, because a lot of things happen on weekends that just, we're not here. So we'll be able to do that. And in the last quarter, 29 code cases opened and 12 code cases closed. We're getting to a point, I would hope by the beginning of the year, to actually be proactively addressing code cases. Again, a lot of what we do right now is based on complaints or what's seen in transit between inspections, but there's certain aspects of our code that we would like to start to work on within the community, specifically focused on life and health and life safety. Kind of businesses as usual. Obviously, you're aware of Jonathan Deputy City Manager's departure, and also John Marquez' departure from the chamber. So that's going to be some recalibration on things related to both the P-Bid, the Chamber of Commerce, and other activities as far as business outreach, so we're working on. I think probably the best conversation we've had is starting to look at what are the things on the plate that are high priority and being able to do maybe a little bit, do fewer things really well rather than spreading two things too quickly. And the good news is we have a pretty strong template in the council strategic goals of what your priorities are, so we can work through that. Housing homeless, Spirit Shelter, the agreement between Fillmore, the county, and us for funding for the 25, 26-year cycle, you approved it at the last council meeting. Fillmore approved it and the full amount at their council meeting last night. It will go to Board of Supervisors next week. We're working on an operational agreement with Spirit, which will accompany that as soon as the county's signed off on this agreement. And we have all the operational and performance requirements identified between all three communities and Spirit. We meet quarterly with the county COC, which is really important. I should note that one of the biggest challenges that we're seeing, especially as it relates to behavioral health and social services, is the amount of budget cuts that are coming from the federal government, specifically CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds. So a lot of recalibration from state, county, down to the city level of what funds will be available for what projects. Had a lot of collaboration in the last few months with development. I'll talk a little bit more about some of these later, but Redtail, you see that down on the freeway, well into vertical development. Homes and Hope in Cabrillo and the Santa Paula Housing Authority are working on a project, and I'll address that also, but collectively as a... Industrial development, I wanted to show a couple of pictures. I usually don't show a lot of pictures, but Benpac, been talking to them. I need to be able to work with them to identify what their exit strategy is for the city. I've got, I'm constantly talking to brokers and folks that are interested in space, but they haven't really identified when they're going to, when that space is going to be available, which makes it difficult for an end user that's ready to lease and it's open-ended when they can go in there. So I need to be able to work with that, because we've had some really good opportunities that have fallen through the cracks. Santa Paula Materials is at the very end of Lemonwood. They took down the property that was Action Pack, and they're doing a stone yard there, which are more finished and fine stone down on that end, and they're really growing. They bought out a company in Santa Barbara and moved everything here. And then Santa Paula Self-Storage, you'll see that on the freeway, from the freeway at Santa Maria Industrial Park. That's about a 44,000 square foot self-storage facility, and that's almost done. And then Bender Farms, I've get a lot of calls and questions from people, what in the world is that development? It is basically two acres under one roof. Last week, they put up all those panels. Those panels range between 35 and 55 tons each, and there were 50 of them. So it went out there for a little bit one morning to watch them put them in place. It's pretty impressive choreography to put that together. Downtown business...
What is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is at Todd Road and the 126. So basically between Cal Pipe and the freeway off Todd Road.
Do they store oranges in there? Like what?
It's basically, it's enough, it can either do 10 individual suites or one large suite. He doesn't have any tenants yet.
So it's a business park?
It's a business park for industrial/business development. So it could be anything from warehousing to offices. A lot of flex industrial space. Thank you for pointing that out. Downtown business activity, Lotteraza has really been taking a while, had some challenges with contractor after contractor. At this point, they're doing interior improvements, paint and windows. So I don't have a window, every time I get feedback of when that's going to be done, there's another hiccup in that, but they're getting close. Good Orchard Cafe is under construction. That is on Mill, right across the street from the Glen Tavern, which will be another event and cafe. And then East Area Gateway, Harvest Medical Pavilion, we're still under review of the medical office part of that. And across the freeway, adjacent to where Redtail is, basically at the northwest corner of 126, and Halleck is 113,000 square foot retail center. We just met with the developer today to finalize what the next steps are to get to Planning Commission, which will be before the end of the year. And then Triangle Property, hope to come to council before the end of the year, hopefully in November, with the proposal for that site, looking at basically an entry activity zone coming into the city. So, but we'll come back to you with that.
A quick question, Mr. Mason, on that back slide? Just real quick. The Harvest Medical Pavilion, are you talking about the property that's right there adjacent to Telegraph Road in Halleck, or is that still the property that's supposedly slated for a future hospital?
That's the same, it's one and the same, the one future hospital. It's...
On the south side?
That would be the first, on the south side. The first part... The first part of that would be the medical office, followed by some type of hospital facility.
So that's southeast of Halleck 126?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification on that, that would be number five on this slide. Number four would be retail, which, speaking to the developer, based on the development of five, will define the retail that will go at four. That's, they're kind of waiting for the combination of Harvest and a medical center, kind of a game changer from the standpoint of retail growth.
So what happens if there's no medical center?
We recalibrate. What can we do based on our specific plan? Or, well, we'll talk. There's some other options that we've talked about, but that may be private medical provider. Don't know what that would be.
Yeah, go ahead.
Three is the Triangle Property that you mentioned for like an entry. What did you, what was it you said?
We own that property that was originally going to be a fire station site. We own that property. We're looking at, basically when you're coming down 126, you go right into that point of that triangle. So the idea of creating a space that's somewhat of an oasis, that has an entry monument, that's welcome to Santa Paula, we're looking at things like charging stations. Basically, our hope for that, based on the specific plan, is to create a lily pad. The fact that people would stop there for one reason, but get a taste of what is available in Santa Paula, so they're not just going there and driving back on the freeway. They would understand that there's an airport, that there's downtown, there's Robles, there's Park K, there's all these things within the city.
And the Triangle right next to Area Two, and Two, is that the same?
That's all one. It's two owners that have gone into partnership to develop that whole site, which will be the 113,000 square feet of retail.
That will all be retail, and the red is what's being built right now?
That's residential. It's 298 residential units.
And that little tiny triangle in between, that's not sold or going to melt into one of these other ones, it's just there?
No, it's a truck yard. We've been working with them, trying to help them find another location, because ideally they don't, they know they don't want to be between apartment site and retail site. And it's good for them too, because it's going to be valuable land once those things get built, so.
And as it stands now, they won't, they're not leaning towards becoming part of number two?
Oh, the Triangle?
Mm-hmm.
At this point, no. There's just some things as far as floodplain and difference in grade between one and two that probably will get developed by itself, but, because both of these are already submitted plans.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Go ahead.
And just to clarify, we have a couple of Triangle Properties in the city. And the other one is where the, we're considering a roundabout, which is near Spirit, but this does not have anything to do with the other one that we deal with. So if you say Triangle Property, sometimes people think immediately of one or the others, so.
I'll refer to this one from now on as the East Area Triangle Property.
All right, thank you.
And speaking of East Area, at this point, we've got almost 700 homes sold out of that Phase One and Two. And Phase Two is the Foothill Site, which I'll show some pictures of, 554 units in that development. So this is the whole East Area Plan. This site is what's currently almost sold out, is 121 units between Lennar and Richmond American. And that's that site. It's basically right on Santa Paula and Halleck. And then the other one, the Foothill Site, which is up, going up the hill, 554 units, that's the view looking down over top of that, from up the hill looking downhill. They've already submitted for their sales trailer and their models, so those, they're going to do pre-sales on that. The other thing that's interesting is Lennar is also doing their own financing on this, keeping the interest rates low, so that it's had a little bit of concern from other developers interested in doing housing, how they're going to compete with Lennar on this, but, so that's exciting. And then finally, we're in discussions right now, we've got concept plans for what would be 298 duplex units, which will be for rent. They will read more like single-family homes, because they're a shared wall unit with a small yard, but they will be for rent. That'll be the one rental property within there. Market rate, also looking at about 6,100 square feet of commercial, which will be both live-work space and some retail space within there. And we'll be coming to you soon with some plans, once we get that finalized. And then I mentioned Topa Vista Villas, which is right next to Teague Park, across from Panda Express, 112 units there. Again, a partnership between Homes and Hope Cabrillo and Santa Paula Housing Authority. And we're seeing a lot more of this. Anybody who's building, even market rate, it takes a partnership and layers of financing to make these things happen in California. It's just so expensive to build housing. And that's a really quick breakdown of projects right now as far as housing. Redtail Apartments, Faulkner Hall, which is right next to, right across the street from Glen Tavern, they're doing 20 units in there. Those will be affordable units. I mentioned Harvest Phase 1D, Phase Two, and then 11th Street Town Homes and Senior Housing. Those have been delayed. We have plans on that, we're waiting for comments on those. Kmart came to you a couple of weeks ago, we're moving forward with that. They've kind of mobilized the team that they need for demo, so that should be starting, they hope, before the end of this month. And then Homes and Hope, I already mentioned that. But total proposed affordable units, we're looking at plus or minus 350 affordable units, and that's everything from very low income to moderate income. I mentioned earlier, building and safety, just the difference between permits and valuation from last year at this time to now. Significant uptick in number of permits and a dramatic uptick, you know, 50% increase on valuation. And then economic development, again, I mentioned Benpac and Action Pac, really trying to work to match up a lot of the warehouse space we have in town with actual employment rather than warehouse users. And have had good success finding folks, working with brokers, but it's just getting the property owners to close the deals, so we need to do some more work on that. Downtown improvement activities, be working with the P-Bid to really kind of see what we can do to partner between our CIP, our Measure T, Measure R, and P-Bid, to look at what things are high priority collectively and what aligns with the council strategic goals. Continue to do outright reach to businesses, both informally and with our Business Connect monthly, with council members and chamber going out and meeting with businesses. Facade Improvement Program, done applicant outreach. It's been on hold just based on resources to be able to get to that, but we're going to be, in the next couple of weeks, working on the low-hanging fruit, which is four applications that we have that are complete and getting them going. And then downtown improvement, downtown property vacancy strategy, that'll be part of one of our municipal code updates, but we already have some template plans on what can be implemented for vacant property, specifically within the downtown, maybe expanding beyond that. And other activities, just looking at other opportunities through state and federal funding for behavioral health and homeless outreach, both in operations and facilities. And Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Committee, we have, the Topa Vista Project will be coming in probably after the first of the year, requesting some assistance for funding for that. And then Mobile Home Rent Review Committee, we're looking at trying to schedule in early to mid-November for a hearing for 400 mobile estates. And from the standpoint of, I can address just questions and concerns about putting together a workshop. We'll be reaching out to just community, active nonprofit groups, Cause, Dor Popular, Latino Town Hall, trying to figure out how we can get the most amount of outreach and attendance at a project like that. So I imagine that will be also in November, to be able to get that set. And then Economic Development Standing Committee, really all the things that we mentioned about what's going on as far as growth and development, but really direction from that group to look at two things, and both in the council strategic goals. One is what we're doing as far as business attention, retention, attraction, and out and retention, attraction, and expansion. Then also, what does a toolkit look like for the type of businesses that we want to bring in? Specifically, the data that a business needs to make a decision to be in Santa Paula and why they should be here. That is my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions. Thanks for...
Questions?
I have a quick one. I know that a really big topic on your presentation is housing and everything that's being built. I don't want to get too far away from any questions that there may be on the mobile estates workshop, but can you just quickly share why there's so much housing being built and the mandate that there is where we have to? It's not really a choice.
Well, number one, we have a regional housing needs assessment, which is defined by the Southern California Association of Governments and by the state Housing and Community Development Department. How many housing units within certain categories that were required to be able to provide a pathway for somebody who wants to develop? We've got about 650 units that we're supposed to provide entitlement and access if somebody wants to build that. Why so many, so much housing is being built? I would probably want to focus more on not what the state requirements are, but what the demands are within our community. We have a lot of families that have multiple families living under one roof, or have extended families living under one roof, because they can't afford housing. And when you look at the median house price versus the median income, the median house price for cost is two and a half times what the median income is, so it just doesn't match up. And we have a little bit lower median income than the rest of the county. So it's being able to provide housing, I would say, when, we want to say we want affordable housing, it's with a capital A, and that's everything from transitional housing for people unhoused to luxury housing, that we have the best and the most affordable in the county. But to start off with, let's house the people that are in Santa Paula and provide affordable housing for the people that live here, so they can stay here. And then our next step is to get jobs for them here too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Thank you for that presentation. In one of your slides, it was commencement of the bridge. I assume that's the Santa Paulistry Bridge?
Yes.
If you could expand a little bit on that, because, one, it's important for ingress and egress to Harvest, two, it's, I think it's one of the requirements for further expansion of housing there. And then, of course, third is access to the new park by our residents that live in town and have to circumvent all the way around Telegraph Road.
It looks like construction on that should commence within the next 30 days, maybe in the next couple of weeks, but at least within the next 30 days. Right now, there are two emergency accesses within Harvest, other than Halleck. One that goes through Texas Lane and another one that goes through Padre Lane. So it's basically on the east and west side of Halleck. But to your point, Councilmember Juarez, they are, we have another 1,500 homes that have yet to be, well, about that 1,400 homes that are yet to be built, they're capped at another 250 until the bridge goes in. So the timing is really critical, especially as quickly as Lennar's moving on that Foothill neighborhood. So if everything goes well, you know, as far as timing, weather, and everything else, you know, the hope would be by the end of next year to have the bridge in place. But it's, again, there's a lot of variables as far as that happening, but we definitely don't want continued construction to be stalemated by that.
Thank you.
First, just a comment, I'm happy to hear that you're going to move forward with the four applications for the facade program that are complete, because I know that those folks who've had their complete applications are excited and ready to start moving. So I'm very happy to hear that. And then just a question in terms of the Business Connect Program. Have you heard any, are there any things that you've learned, or is this the time for sharing those, or what do you think would be the process for sharing back with the councils, or what has been learned through those meetings?
That's actually a really good idea, I think, to be able to have just a presentation on what we got as far as feedback, both in positive response and needs. And that was our main goal in this, was to find out what can we do for you to help you succeed? And the biggest hurdle in that is, you know, a lot of businesses have no idea what we do, so there's a little bit of education there on what areas we have control and opportunity to help. So I, yeah, I think we can come back.
Thank you, Director Mason. Going back to the bridge, if construction is beginning, we know that the construction is being done by the developer, and the developer is only allowed to do construction during certain months, so it won't be start to finish, and this is really more for public's understanding, that there'll be at some point some dates or months that no work can be done, or only work can be done on the banks and that sort of thing, in order, and that's why it would take so long. Everyone would have liked to have it done years ago. We all feel that way. But if it is starting at least and progressing to be, we all hope, we can finish by next fall, fall or winter, that would be wonderful for the whole city. So I just basically wanted to make sure for public understanding that it can't be worked on on certain months, so.
And their goal, the window of opportunity to work in the creek is from May to September, and that's, the bridge will span the creek, but to make that span, they're going to have to do supports in the creek. So up until that point, they will be working on the embankments, so all the support and roads connecting to the bridge, so.
Other questions? All right, I have a few questions, Mr. Mason, as always. To Councilmember Crosswight's point, I attended six of the Business Connect meetings, and what I kept hearing is that they need customers, which ties again to the need, the unintended consequences of having housing is you have people, and people will be able to shop in our businesses and grow that, right? However, you know, two of the four, six businesses that I went to no longer exist, so I think it's time, to Ms. Crosswight's point, to reassess that and reimagine it so that we can find a better way forward. There was a chart up here regarding business permits. It said commercial business permits. You consider, what number do you show for just entrepreneurs starting a business wanting to get a license? Do you, have you had a, you have a metric for that?
No. It's, I mean, we could probably break it down based on the business submittals and knowing who they are, but I don't know that we have a query set up to be able to break them down to that.
So it was just total of, in that number you showed on that slide?
Right.
I think there was a total of four commercial? So that can be a small business, so that can be a corporation?
Exactly.
You know, as we move forward, there's been a lot of conversations in the community about the impact of small vendors, startups, and it'd be helpful to know what debt we're making and ensuring that these small businesses understand the importance of going through the permitting process. And obviously, they want, they start with the product, the idea, they grow it, but we want them to grow even further, right? To maybe a brick and mortar. The other thing you mentioned was an operational agreement that was being set up with Spirit. And one of the things that we had had conversations with in the past, that I don't think staff necessarily was listening to, was being involved in that process, knowing that we have a housing and homeless committee that has yet to review anything regarding that agreement. I'm asking that, that agreement be vetted through that medium, so that we at least know what's happening in regards to the agreement moving forward and the expectations, even if it's just shared about what...
Information.
So we know, the committee knows itself, because it also... So we know, the committee knows itself, because it also consists of planning commissioners. And then, one of the things that we mentioned, and you know, Councilmember Crossway, and I both serve on the Economic Development Committee, the importance of metrics in regards to job creation and finding out where we can get this data, because it's important as these new businesses come in, for us to know how we're doing in that, that, that aspect. Obviously, the more we create locally, the more people can stay here locally, but unfortunately, as you know, I think you mentioned, the number was above almost 70%.
Yes.
People that have to go somewhere else for a job. And then, you know, the good people have come to meeting after meeting after meeting, and they've asked for information regarding next steps. And I really want to urge the department and the leadership to reach out to the leadership of the folks that keep coming over and over and over again, asking, pleading with us about their concerns. And it'd be great if you can reach out to them and maybe set up a meeting and a conversation so at least they have an understanding and expectation of timelines. Obviously, government does not work as quickly unless you want it to, because I've seen things happen in a heartbeat, and I've seen things delayed for so long. So I really would appreciate that the leadership of the city make an effort to reach out to the residents, or the leadership of, of the association of, of the Mobile Home Park. And again, do we know? We know that there's a lot of investment from the state regarding the, the Prop 1, which is essentially homelessness, right? Do we have any insight or idea regarding potential grant opportunities that you think that the city is going to look into?
It's really going to be the behavioral health grant. Home Key has been discontinued. There's no more rounds of that. And everything else, as far as, we have a meeting in November with the county on CDBG for the next round, and that'll give us an indication of what's available. And every year, they come back, they're, they kind of, the Fed has more of a chokehold on what CDBG can be used for. So it's, that'll be a real indication of what we may have opportunity to use. And they'll be talking about other grants also.
Okay. Great. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the agenda, to the city manager's report, actually, city council report. So we'll start with Councilmember Crossway.
All right. So since we last met, I had a VCTC meeting, and now, it had originally been hoped that the Ferris Drive Bridge would be completed earlier this fall, and now they're saying it's probably going to be by the end of the year. So that's the new goal. Sierra Northern is really having a hard time getting the contractor with their time scheduled to come in and out and actually do the work. Once the work begins, it will only be a couple of weeks, a week to two weeks to get it completed, but they're just really struggling with getting the contractor to come out. So new goal is end of the year. But they are expect, inspecting it every week to make sure that it is still stable and doesn't have any additional issues between now and then. I also attended a joint meeting between the Southern California Association of Governments and the Kern COG, their Council of Governments. So it was a Kern County plus our six-county region. The two organizations were meeting and finding out, you know, sharing, well, this, this is what we're working on, this is what you're working on, what are the areas of similarity, what are the areas of difference, and how can we support one another? I think one of the most interesting things that came out of the meeting was that the Kern COG is really focusing on, they want to be a pilot region for autonomous trucking.
Oh, God.
And maybe trains. And so that's something that they're really focused on, because they, they have, they feel like they have spaces where they think it would be less unsafe to test those out than, say, going through the middle of LA. The other thing that they were really concerned about was if they're taking, having train travel that's going from their county down to the port, they're worried about some security along the rail lines. There's been certain points along the rail line where there have been issues with break-ins to cars, and like, if the wrong kind of, you know, they're, the, when that's happening, they're looking for electronics usually. They're like, but if it's an ag container, the whole, if the outside is breached, the whole load has to be disposed of. And so they were trying to work with the county of LA to figure out, in those areas where they know that they're having problems, you know, are there ways that they can work together? So those were sort of two of the takeaways that I remember, and then, you know, it would, it's always interesting to, to hear what's happening in other areas. The mayor and I have had a couple of different ad hoc committee meetings around the request from Athens, and I think that we're close to coming back to the council with sort of where we're at on that. So I think we have one more meeting that we need to have before that we'll come back to the council. And then, we all, it didn't used to be that everybody would go, but we all attended the League of California Cities Conference, and just some of the highlights of workshops that I attended were, I attended the one on immigration, short-term rentals, the, oh, one on cities that are, have worked on public-private partnerships in order to advance sustainability, their sustainability programs, and try to meet some of their climate goals in ways that didn't impact their city's budget. And so I passed some of those resources along to staff. Some stuff on wildfire, emergency preparedness in general, and wildfire in particular, and some of the lessons learned. One of the things from that one that struck me was they were talking about the importance of, one of the things that they hadn't gotten around to between the first fire they had experienced, and then the Palisades Fire, which burnt all the way over to Malibu, was they had been talking about, oh, we should also have our council trained on their role and, and what they need to know. And they had been talking about doing it, and then, you know, the next disaster comes in. But that was one piece, that they're like, we do, we were doing tabletops within our own organization, but we hadn't really been planning for how the council would be involved. And then the other thing that they talked about was sort of encouraging people, to the extent possible, to think about doing, for lack of a better word, like a surprise drill, so that, you know, you, you get a chance, they're like, because they're like, when it happens, and when you have to respond, you don't want that to be the, the moment that you find out, oh, these are the people that freeze up, and these are the people that rise to the challenge. And so the, the more that you can really sort of simulate that, so that you have a better sense when you go into a real emergency. That was just something that I hadn't heard, talked about before. Like, I know tomorrow, is it tomorrow? I think tomorrow is the, is tomorrow the 16th? Yes. So tomorrow is the day of the great shakeout. So 10:16 at 10:16, people are encouraged to think about wherever you are at that moment, what would you do if there was an earthquake? And so it's, it's one thing to think through, like, when there's those moments where you're like, oh, okay, tomorrow, we're going to talk about it. I don't know if we are, but, but also to really think about what would it look like to run a drill when you didn't know when was, when it was coming. So then you really had to sort of drop everything, which is what happens in an emergency. So there are some other great things, but those were some highlights, and then I'm sure someone will talk a little bit more about the award, but the city did receive a Helen Potnom Award, so.
All right, Ms. Cornejo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just touched briefly on the fact that, yes, I was there in attendance in Long Beach at the League of California Cities Conference as well. You get so much out of the, the breakout seminars and, and discussions, as well as the networking with, with other council members on the challenges that they had. One thing that I took away from just general discussion and some of the topics was that there actually is still a lot of money out there. We all say that there's no money to be had, but it actually is more federal than state at this point, and that it actually, you have to just take some care as to your framing of the needs, of when you're looking for the money, and looking for those grants and all, and this, and in particular, many of the things can be considered as infrastructure, and so you focus on infrastructure needs, and that's how you can look and attain the possibility, at least, of getting, bringing in some federal funding for some of our projects. And I do believe we'd qualify for things like that. So it's worth, worth listening to, to, and not feeling hopeless that there's nothing out there. It's just how you frame it, how you apply for it. I won't mention the award either, because the mayor and vice mayor were there for, to receive that, so that was really an honor and a special thing for us. Let's see, I'll move on to, attended Harding Park Advisory Board this week. It's their quarterly meeting, and we did a review of the purpose. There's some new members of the, of the advisory board, and so we reviewed our purpose, our history, so that everyone knows just how we function. It really, over the recent years, has turned into a really wonderful operation, very much appreciated, and serving many people in our community through baseball and softball especially. But it's a great board, and I love being a part of, part of that. I attended, not attended, just participated myself. Athen Services had their recycling of electronics and giving out of mulch to anyone who needed it, so I got rid of a whole bunch of old electronics and cleaned, cleaned house and business with a lot of that old stuff. So felt good that, that we had that opportunity free in our community. Let's see, while in Long Beach, I did steal away, it wasn't city business, but I did have the honor of, as I'm a member of the Fair Board, and I've been a member of the ad hoc committee for, for the Surfers Point Project, which has been going on since the end of the 90s. But the city of Ventura and the, the fairgrounds were awarded the Coastal Project Award for the Surfers Point Project, and they don't even give the award. This is national award, they don't even give the award every year. So it was a very special thing to be there with our fellow Ventura city members as well, accepting it together. And it's just a, a good example of how agencies in our region especially can collaborate on great things for, for the betterment of all of us in the county. So I was honored to be the one who was, happened to be in Long Beach and could help accept that award on, on behalf of the fairgrounds. And then yesterday, we were all here doing interviews for, for the candidates of boards and commissions, or positions that we need to fill. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cornejo. Ms. Ornellus.
I don't really have anything new to report that hasn't already been talked about. The conference and the committee interviews yesterday is all I have on the list. I believe we already talked about the Labor Day Parade at the last meeting, so that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Besides the committees and different function that the council goes to, every once in a while, we're called in to be with staff. So on the 6th, the mayor and I met with staff regarding some internal communications that hadn't been done. That was 8 o'clock in the morning. On Tuesday, the 7th, I had the honor of, again, giving the history of the Santa Paula Police Department to a new, new police officer. And it's, I was encouraging for them to be, encouraging and exciting to, to tell them about the history of our city. And in fact, commander, one of the commanders sat in and listened to it as well. At the League of California Cities, besides the presentation, there were some great speakers. Some of the things that I attended, one was disruptive council meetings, which haven't seen any yet, but just in case. There was, as Councilmember Crossway said, the Malibu Fire Disaster Response, and some of the things that they learned. And some of the things that they, as Councilmember Crossway suggested, is we have DSW or Disaster Service workers, and all our employees are required to be part of that, so that if a disaster happens in, say, Santa Paula, and they can't get here, they can be a resource to the city they live in. And conversely, if there's an employee from Auctionard or another city that lives in the city, they can get to their city, they can come in and be a resource for us. They talked a lot about making sure that the council is a DSW, and also the different modules offered by, what's it called, NIM's National Incident Management System. So it's important that everybody be trained on that. And looking on what that board of that Incident Command section, very rarely does that get used. It's a tabletop exercise. In fact, during the Malibu Fire, they had to move their ELC to a different city. So it's not beyond the realm of possibility that, that looks good on paper, but you may have to set up in a parking lot somewhere. So hopefully, that won't ever happen. There was a vendor that I had talked to, and I brought back information about a program for identifying and, and giving a rating to each of your sidewalks, and a program with GPS to go out and videotape, and it'll bring it to you on a, you know, computer screen. It's kind of like we do with the pavement management system, so I'll be sure to forward that to our city manager as well. On the 10th, the Friday when we got home, Barbara Webster celebrated its 100th anniversary, very well attended. I know that we've seen a decline in some participation of events around the city, but that was very well attended. A lot of people, a lot of former students, and it started at, I think, 5:00 and 1:00 to 8:00. And Barbara Webster used to be called Canyon School, and they had the, several of their past teachers and law alumni that were there. And as Councilmember Cornejo said, we did have interviews yesterday for several candidates that are just trying to get onto committees, and it's always just a tough, tough decision to make, a lot of qualified people. But just keep this in mind, if these folks don't get on, there are other opportunities that are going to be coming up. And that's my report, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It was a real pleasure to be at the league conference and, and to have all of our council members represented, because as was mentioned, Santa Paula, for the first time in our history, was the recipient of a statewide award in recognition of our public engagement and outreach efforts, our Leadership Academy, our newsletter. And it was just a treat, because of that award, to also have the opportunity to have the booth in the expo hall and to highlight and really kind of parade our city in front of other cities. We got a lot of really positive feedback, and I just want to extend my thanks and appreciation to our fellows, who have made a lot of this possible, and our former DCM for overseeing those efforts. We also, in the last two weeks, have had a Measure R committee to convene them, to reflect on, although it really wasn't a full year at all, of revenues for the new Measure R, but there was three months' worth. So our finance director reported to them on what those revenues looked like and, and recommendations that'll be coming to the council next month. And then, had a chance to go to the Taste of Santa Paula event, which was well-attended and always a treat to see the local businesses of our town highlighted. So that is it for me.
All right. We are moving on to the consent calendar, item 10. Any council member would like to pull consent item, item? Yeah, you got a question?
Just a quick comment, that it's not a pulling it, but on the approval of minutes, I made a very minor correction to the regular meeting minutes for July 2nd. It was more clerical than, not, not substantive, just so you're aware.
So noted. All right, is there a motion?
I would move approval of the consent calendar with the clerical edits to the minutes that were, have been given to the clerk.
All right. Second, motion second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you for the consent calendar. We are going to go to item 11. Public hearing, verification of posting notice by city clerk.
Yes, Mayor, that's posted.
Great. Is there any declaration of conflicts, if any? Any declarations of ex parte contacts, if any? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. We are, have a staff presentation today, and Kristi Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As noted, this is a public hearing to a follow-up conversation on user fees. As such, the presentation will be brief in the overview of the, the study that was previously submitted for your review, and will really focus more on answering the questions that council had at the last meeting, and providing additional clarification. So moving to our first slide, as we noted, the cost allocation plan, and actually, before I start, I should say that Pretty, our consultant from Welldan, is on a Zoom call, and we have your department directors here to answer any specific questions that you— your department directors here to answer any specific questions that you may have. Moving on, the cost allocation plan, as we mentioned, was the recovery of indirect costs. It's the foundation, truly the foundation for the user fee study. And the last point that was made was that it identified and distributed administrative costs in a fair and comprehensive manner. However, as you know, you have the ability to determine what will and will not get assessed. On that note, hello? Maybe I'm too far. Can I just show you next slide, Julie? Okay, next slide. Thank you.
Yes. I'm going to bring that down and restart this because for some reason it's not even there.
Okay. So while Julie pulls that up, I'll go on to say that the next slide, which we'll show here in a second, showed the cost allocation study plan. Oh, that's not my presentation, Julie.
It's working.
It is working, but it's not my presentation. So the PowerPoint and the study included the allocable cost survey, which is shown on the left-hand side, the allocable cost of $5.7 million. And on the right-hand side is where the distribution of those costs would be established. As you can see, sewer and water are fairly in line with where our projections were leaning over the past few years. But again, you are able to assess whether or not you would actually allocate these costs. For example, miscellaneous deposits has a cost of $15,000. But then the question would be, where would those charges be if they're miscellaneous deposits? Who are we going to be charging and how much? You have some funds, such as the mobile home rent review, that granted the allocable cost is only $690, but that continues to be in the red due to exceeding legal costs compared to the revenues that come in. So it's just something to consider. This will be brought back to you. This is already being incorporated into your current budget. The numbers from the study have been incorporated into your current budget. So you won't have to approve anything this year, but in our mid-cycle report in future years, you'll be able to make that determination. We mentioned user fees and the benefits that it provides to the community and how the cost recovery would be determined by council. Pretty noted that it did not include development impact fees, utility rates and taxes, because that does come in their own processes. We talked about the updates and how it impacted the general fund and the knowledge and planning of cost recovery. On that note, we talked about the process, the types of data that was used, when the models were developed, the multiple staff meetings that occurred, et cetera. And we really ended the presentation on the next steps. And I cut off a big part of Pretty's presentation because this is what I felt was the true actionable next steps. The first was identifying potential new fees not currently collected. We'll talk about those in a second. Reducing or removing fees if council wasn't comfortable with the cost recovery method and incorporating or establishing cost recovery goals in general, in line with that second point. The policy considerations in that effort was recommending utilizing, included recommending utilizing compensation factor or CPI to adjust annual fees. We do want to make a note that the resolution that was included as part of the staff report does have one edit and will have a red line that can be provided by the city clerk. We hope to streamline the CPI process to be incorporated into the budget. So what that means is instead of coming to you once a year and having our rates change once a year, along with our budget process, they'll change reflective of the last two years' CPI increases. And that's the change that the city attorney has helped us with language for the resolution. The other thing to note is because these are new fees, and I'm sure council will have quite a few questions for our department heads in a second, that will be the same learning process that staff will have with some of these new fees. There are also, so there may be a chance for us to come back for clarification. With that opportunity, we did identify a few new fees related to parks and recreation that weren't able to be incorporated into the current study. So we hope to come back to council in January to have those few new fees added. So the last time that we met, council requested some clarification on a few items. The first was providing information on when a home occupancy permit requires an inspection because you really wanted to get an understanding of the total cost of a home business operations. And the answer is if the business type has potential for traffic, noise, or environmental or parking impacts, is when it would require an inspection. Because most home businesses are office or service-based, they rarely require an inspection per our Community Economics Development Director. It also, you also noted the language regarding the reserve officer cost not being in the cost allocation, the user fee schedule. The reason for that is because that fully burdened cost is fully burdened for employees and reserve officers are not employees. They actually get paid as contract employees or as contractors. They get paid through accounts payable. However, we did include a footnote in the fee schedule that their costs would be reflected, will be reflective of the cost of their services. You had a question on category 2 user subsidies and cost to the city. We felt that this was worthy of a longer conversation and the Parks and Recreation Director will come back to you with that at a future date. However, we will touch briefly on comparison of costs to other cities in a few slides. And then leaning into that, you requested a comparison of fees to other cities. This was a really big challenge and one that I wasn't able to complete, to be completely honest with you. It wasn't within the scope of our user fee studies and so Pretty wasn't able to do that either. But what it really comes down to is every department is very familiar with their own fees. And so they're best fit to do that survey because when you look at other cities, other cities use terminology that is different across cities. So I have requested that departments provide any information and if council would like to see that, we will be more than happy to come back and provide that. But right now, we're going to focus on parks and recreation because your Parks and Recreation Director, Greg Barnes, is a superstar and had that ready for me for today. This is the comparison of the costs related to different fees for different groups. And as you can see, just in this short comparison, there's a variety of groups, of classes that different cities use. There's different types of fees that are being used. So in general, when you're looking at the rates for, let's say, class 1, you're ranging from the higher end for sports fields, for example, $15 to $20, $25, $29, $49, to the more lower end, which would be Ojai, $8, or the Santa Paula proposed, $17? Is that right? $12 for category 2 for fields. And Greg can speak more on this. But this is one reflective of the difficulty of doing a comparison across cities, but also it at least gives you a glimpse of the comparisons of the rates that were proposed and how they are in line, reflective of Santa Paula's smaller city status compared to, for example, Ojai, who will do the barbecue area going up to $300, but ours is maxed at around Moving on, we did want to highlight new fees and we'll talk about those more in depth, I'm sure, if you have questions as well. We have document, new document printing related to the administrative department, ranging between 15 to 75 cents for letter documents, depending on if they're color, black and white, and $5 to $6 for 2 feet by 3 feet documents. For public works, we had various deposit-based fees related to ADUs. We had water meter installation costs for 6 to 8-inch meters, which was missing before, that's new. We had water meter box cleanup and customer site leak, which you have your water superintendent here that can answer any additional questions. And then we had general services call for $69. We will have, I don't know if you want me to speak on this, Frank, or if you'd prefer to speak on it or wait till council has more questions, but generally speaking, that's the one that I wanted to be most transparent about because when people call, that will be a new fee for them and we want to make sure that they're not thinking that it wasn't, you know, vetted through the proper process. We have a new general plan maintenance fee in planning and we have parks and recreations, the few fees that you saw in the earlier slide, along with batting cages, basketball courts, amphitheaters, sports park facility, and Union Oil Building. Really, most of the buildings that we didn't have before that we now do that need fees associated with them. So that said, that was a mouthful, but I wanted to make sure that council had the opportunity to ask any questions related to the fees before moving forward.
You know, in the staff report, I think it gives us a breakdown per department, whether it's a new fee, it's going down. And maybe we can start with going through each one, unless there's something that, or something that sticks out. I think the most concerning one that I've heard from residents about has been the parks and rec fees. So is there another one of concern that we can pull out to discuss?
Well, I have certain questions on certain line items. So at some point, I have those. I also have a couple of overall questions. So I don't know what point you.
Do you want to start with overall first?
Sure. So on the CPI, how practically does that work? Because like there's some fees that are set by statutes or like, is that something we'll have to contract with someone? Is that something, there'll be line items that are flagged? Is these the ones, these are the ones that CPI applies to? Like I'm just trying to understand practically, since we've never done that before. How does that work?
So you didn't, in the past, not recent past, but in the past, it would apply to all the fees and because the, our consultants have provided the fees in an Excel format, all it would take was to do a simple automatic calculation. So in terms of the capacity for staff to do it and not have to form it out, it is very simple for us.
And then in terms of like, if there were certain things that the council wasn't comfortable escalating, then that would be a conversation at the budget cycle?
Correct.
And then that would also apply to the retainers?
When you say retainers, do you mean deposit cases?
The, yeah, the deposit, like development deposits.
That's a great point.
Because that's a little different than a fee. So that's part of why I was like, there's different, there's the things that are fee-specific, but then there's deposits and other things. And so I was just trying to understand.
That's a great point. I would recommend that deposits stay stagnant. One of the other recommendations on your, as part of this process, is to make sure that we're back on that three-to-five-year schedule of reviewing the fees and having them be more up to date. Otherwise, you'll start getting into deposits of $6,123.
Well, that's kind of what I was, like, that seemed like some of those. And so that's where I was trying to get a sense of. It didn't seem like it would be as easy as just, we're going to stick it all in and automatically escalate everything that they're, and so that's why I didn't know if there's a way to, you know, in that, flag certain categories as things that don't get the escalator or like, just try to get a sense of staff time work-wise, how that worked. Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to point out in our resolution, it calls for an automatic increase across all fees. So if we want to add something to say before councils will have the opportunity to review those fees before an increase occurs by CPI.
And that's required language? Like, does it give us the opportunity to increase by CPI or is required to increase by CPI?
There's no requirement. We have included it in our resolution so that we do not have to return every two years to bring the fees up to market.
I guess I would, personally, I would feel more comfortable, especially just like the mayor has said about, you know, some of, there might be parks and rec or certain things that we really want to think about. And so I guess I want us to be able to, I think there's most things that make sense. I just.
I think you want some flexibility.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I'm not sure.
To go through automatically without a blessing from the council.
So I don't know how others feel. Maybe the majority of people just want it to happen, but that was something that I wanted to, just as a big picture before we got into anything else.
Would we need to return, Monica, with amended language?
You can make the amendment to the resolution right now and then we would just finalize that for signature through our clerk's office.
Could we just have language that we would review it at budget time, that these will be automatic? And is there anyone that needs to be looked at at this particular time at budget time? Just trying to simplify it. I'm not opposed to, CPI is CPI, cost is cost. It's going to go up. Our costs go up. So, but if there are some flat fees that we want to look at that either may need to be increased, maybe they could be presented at budget time.
So.
I don't know. Again, I just don't want it to be so complicated that we go, what we're trying to do is avoid this whole process every year, so.
Could you, so that people understand these terms that we're using, when we have existing fees, can you please explain the CPI? So people understand what that means.
Yes. When you have existing fees, they are based on the data that we have at the moment. They are based on staff's current costs, the cost of materials, et cetera. Because costs go up year over year, there is a consumer price index that establishes based on region and type of product, how much over the course of a certain period. For us, we would be using it over the course of two years. Those costs have increased on a percentage basis. So we would be applying that cost increase to our fees because the fees would, if not done, stay stagnant and not keep up with the cost of inflation. For that reason, because we haven't done a user fee study in the past almost 10 years.
I'm sorry, how long?
Almost 10 years. Well.
We've been working on this one for three.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And the process for this one was to hire a consultant to do internal data collection and analysis and then provide that back to us?
And work with our staff to determine what fees. So it was an ongoing process and a lot of work for staff to determine how much of your time gets spent on this item and how much of time gets spent on this item. That's part of the reason why we want to make sure to be more consistent and go to a three- or five-year, or five-year as recommended here, moving forward. But like you said, those, that cost of inflation, the CPI is needed to make sure that fees are in line with the costs of the things that are being incorporated into the fee.
So I guess we're in the midst of, do we trigger it automatically versus, unless there's an objection from council? I mean, how do we write it out?
Well, and I think part of it, well, but part for me too is it's like, you know, there's also things in here like the water disconnect and reconnect fees are regulated by SB 998. So if we just said, oh, we're just going to apply CPI to everything, well, I don't know that SB 998 says there's an automatic CPI. So I guess that's where I was like, it just didn't seem as easy as we're going to apply CPI across everything every two years. And so then how do we make sure that when that's done, it happens correctly? I mean, not that I don't trust that, but I'm just trying to, like, I'm just wondering, is it a big deal if it was like, I don't know, it's a consent calendar item and then if there's something that needs to be pulled for further discussion, it could be pulled, you know, along with the budget cycle.
May I suggest an edit to the resolution? So Section 3 currently says the city council hereby adopts the fees shown in Exhibit A, which will become effective as of January 1st, 2026. And that beginning July 1st, 2026, on the first day of July, each July thereafter, the fee shall be increased by the prior calendar year's annual average consumer price index. And here is the proposed change on the first day, the fees shall be increased on the first day of every other July thereafter, so it's every two years. Unless directed otherwise by city council or contrary to law, the fee shall be increased by the immediately prior calendar year's annual average CPI.
Okay, so the language is, allows for the flexibility. Okay, so the language is, allows for the flexibility.
So council can step in, or if there's some law that prevents the increase.
Is the council okay with that language being sufficient?
I, I'm okay, because, again, it allows for a, a law that we have to abide by, and the ability for, in budget time, staff to say, hey, this is not working. We need to either increase because we're realizing our costs are higher, or maybe we can lower it as well, so that it does give, just having that bit of flexibility at budget time every other, every two years, because we do need to be somewhat flexible, there may be things like that that we need to, and staff directors could bring in any of those that they consider necessary, either to cover their costs, or say, you know, we're not, we're finding efficiencies here, and we don't need to charge as much, so, so that could be brought to us every couple of years.
But there is a practical piece that I think that you, you're alluding to, which has, at what point will that be triggered? Right, in case there's a, to your point about fees, or if they're lower, or we want to address maybe waiving some fees, or putting caps, like, at what point do we give that input?
Right, because it, it feels, even with the edit, I feel like that's better, but it also assumes that whoever's on council.
Knows.
Knows to trigger it every two years with the budget.
So would it be appropriate to say, where applicable, and then the fees will be adjusted?
No, I think that's a whole different thing, I think the, the, this particular point is, at what point would the council be able to review these things in case you have concerns regarding fees?
Right, well, that's why I was asking if we could just say that it would be a consent calendar item.
Like, we require it to come to consent three months before budget, or a month before, whatever the, the, so it's practical and it stays in the calendar as an ongoing thing, and if there's nothing to review, then it just proceeds.
We can do that as part of the budget process, the budget process starts in January, February, and we already start discussions with council in April. I don't, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be a part of the resolution, but we can definitely incorporate that into our process. We would need to in order to know what we're going to do in July anyways.
In order to set the budget, staff would have to do that anyway, so I guess I'm just saying, I would be more comfortable if this was something that January, February of a budget cycle year, it could even come as a consent calendar item, and then it only gets pulled if there's a specific item that council wants to give different direction on, otherwise it becomes a routine.
And how do we make sure it comes to?
If I'm still here, you can depend on me.
Let's think that you're not here, you know, we're thinking about something that can be a system that is recurring. How do we make something recurring? What is a trigger, is there something through policies and procedures?
You should add it to the resolution.
That's, that's, yeah, there it is.
And I would still suggest maybe the where applicable language, because, because to your point about like SB 998.
Yeah.
Right, it might not be applicable. Or there might, to Councilwoman Cornejo's point, there might be an occasion where a fee does go down. So we're not applying a CPI if we're reducing a fee, right? So maybe adding that applicability language would be helpful.
So can, Monica, can you add something on there so that it automatically goes into the?
Also, I'm not a lawyer, but could we not just say may increase fees instead of shall? That was our, our choice?
Will.
Is it, or will?
Then it's not automatic.
Okay, got it.
The council's requesting that it not be automatic.
It's semi-automatic.
It's semi-automatic.
It's not automatic if it's coming to you for a review, because you also have to approve it. So that's not automatic.
But it comes, it could cook from consent, right?
Sure, it can be on consent if it's minor changes.
Just so I wanted to get lost in case there's institutional.
Automatic would mean that we skip the step of having to put it on an agenda. So if you want that transparency and that opportunity, then let's just have it change the automatic language to be that fee adjustments will be reviewed by the council as part of the biannual budget process.
There you go.
And we're removing the automatic CPI, okay.
But that it would be based on, those adjustments would be based on CPI, though. So we're not entirely removing CPI?
Right.
The basis would be CPI, absent an exception by law or a, a specific budget need.
Which, the language in that, that you read to us gave us that flexibility. We're just adding that it somehow comes into the resolution that it should at least come for, at some review.
Okay, so.
During the budget process, the language that you just said.
Right.
Basically insert that as a pretext.
So I have at the end, fee adjustments based on CPI will be reviewed during the budget, regular budget process.
Yeah.
And that's good, because we do it biannually, but we may not always. So during the budget process is, is, leaves it open for that, too.
Good point.
It also gives us some flexibility if we ended up in a situation, again, where we're 10 years in, at year six, you might go, you know what, some of these fees we need to pause, because we think they might be getting too high, until we do another. Like, we probably, if we had done that, if we'd had the CPI process, we probably would have done that with some of the business fees, for example, because that one was at $581, and guess what, now it's 200. Right, and so that's one that we've had concern about for a while, and so if you, it, it, it just gives that flexibility.
Can we talk about the categories, Mr. Barnes, Director Barnes? Just to share with the public so they can understand the categories under the usage of facilities?
Sure.
And would you?
Our category, like, our category one, category two.
Yeah, because not everyone understands our terminology. Oh, awesome, and then can you show that slide as a, just as a reference? And in the packet, I'm looking at the Parks and Rec section under page 52. Actually, 53. Starts with banners.
So did you want me to go through each category?
Yeah.
Sure. So category one permit fees do not pay the basic rates. They're typically small nonprofits that are going to use the facility while we, bless you, while we have staff on site, or, you know, we're already there at the facility, and there's not really an, an extra cost for them to be using it. We don't see that very often, but it, but it is a category listed. Category two are a lot of the ASO, Little League, girls softball, those groups that are typically fit that, they're nonprofit. 85% of their participants are Santa Paula residents, and they have to have at least 75 participants in their program to fit into that category. So again, local organizations that we're all familiar with, extreme soccer, and some of those groups also fall under those categories. Category three through five are very close in description. They typically in, historically have fallen like in the same rate. We've charged them kind of the same rate as for three through five. And then category six are, they're groups that are using parks for commercial reasons or for financial gain. So maybe they're having an event, or they want to put on some kind of.
Tournament?
Tournament, or something, yeah, and they're, and they're, they're not a nonprofit, but they're using it for financial gain. So we charge our rate plus 25% or a negotiated fee. And then category seven are for groups that are outside of our jurisdiction. So we have, I'll give you an example, we have an adult baseball group that uses Harding Park. So they pay the basic rate plus 40% to use our fields, and they've used Harding Park for, for quite some time. So that's kind of the basic rundown, if you remember, like, with Harding Park, council a few years back waived fees for the category two users. We didn't specify, you didn't specifically call a group, we just made it to a category two user, which at the time were like girls softball and Little League fit that category. So that's, that's how we categorize them. As you see up here, Pleasant Valley, they have different classes. So when we're looking at other cities, too, and their fees, it's not always apples to apples, right? Because they can have, and I don't necessarily remember each group or how they categorize them. Typically, they're, the lower rates are going to be like your nonprofit youth groups. But also the facilities are not the same. So, you know, they might be charging $8 for a field, or $10 for a field, but that's a different, different facility. You know, maybe the maintenance is a little different on that field, or, or things, that park, or things like that as well, so. It gives a snapshot what other cities, you know, Ventura charges a one-time, I think it's an annual, but a one-time $200 permit fee. So if you want to rent their fields, you pay a $200, like, application fee, and then you rent the fields on an annual basis. So everyone's kind of has their own approach to user fees. I will say are, but one thing that we've done over the past few years is users would pay the user fee, and then we're lining their own fields, you know, prepping for soccer, we do that for them now. So we line all the fields for our users, so ASO's using the, the sports field, we, we line all their fields for them.
What do you call that, robot?
Yeah, we do, we do, all right, and actually, we're purchasing a second one, because now we have so many fields. But we use that, and, but we take care of that for them, so the paint's supplied for them, we, we line the fields, we prep them, we put the goals out. We get, when we have softball, we drag the fields, we prep the fields. We ask them to, sometimes they have to chalk it, but we do all of the other work to get it prepped for them. So if, looking up here, Fillmore charges $109 if city preps fields, you know, that's, we've kind of, you know, done our best to kind of roll that into our fees. So we're not charging extra fees, we have our hourly fee, but it takes into account the extras that we do currently provide our residents and users.
So the sports fields right now, for basically a nonprofit group, would be $12 an hour?
So.
If they're category two.
So sports fields, so that would be.
Soccer fields?
That's Los Piedras antique fields, right, and it was $8. And so it would be $12 for a category two nonprofit youth organization.
And it hasn't been increased in 10 years.
And it hasn't been increased in 10, 10 years.
Keep up with the cost of.
Yeah, so we're going from eight to 12 for that category. So, and, and yes, it's, you know, it's a 10-year gap of raising any fees, so it, it did go up $4. The sports park obviously is a different complex, so, you know, we've proposed $25 for that category. Now, just to make you aware, ASO, and, you know, Mayor, you had the privilege of sitting in on that meeting where we were talking about kind of the fields, we have three sports fields out there. So when we charge that $25 for field three, we're lining three or four fields for them. So they're getting three or four different divisions on one sports field, but we're charging them for one sports field. Like, it's $25, so they're getting, I think currently, a field and a half, I mean, I think we have like seven or eight actual fields lined for them, but they're paying typically for one.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Yeah.
Are you ready for other questions?
Yes, let's go.
I don't think we have any public comment on this hearing, right?
Ms. Latchell, do we have any public, we're done with the staff presentation, so.
No, we have no public comments turned in.
Okay.
All right, and just so folks know that are watching, we're analyzing fees for the use of our facilities. So if there's something that you look into this report, you can reach out to your council members about it, and you also can come to a city council media, express your concern about these fees during our next hearing. All right.
All right, so do you want me to do this by?
Category?
Well, I would say by packet page or by document page?
Document page, please.
Why don't you do document page, just because our consultant is listening in.
So document page 28, on line 13, it talks about a business license, and then it says unit per day, but the fee is $250. Is that some sort of special business, or is that, should that say per year?
No, it is $250 per day, it is, it is a special type of business license permit. It is for filming permits, that's what gets applied. This and a few others are layover fees from a previous, the last cost allocation study, and that is for filming permits, so we can identify business license for filming permits.
So should we specify on there what that is for?
Yes, Monica, can I add the language film, for film permits?
Yes.
Okay, I just think that that would be helpful. And then, can someone speak to, on the public works fees? There are now, we're, we're suggesting moving from smaller amounts of fees for, sorry, page 29 of the document, for single-family, commercial, and multifamily. There's much smaller numbers, and we're looking at moving to a retainer of 7,500, 7,510,000. Is that just to make sure that we capture the funding, or can someone speak to that?
So what we, is this all? Okay. So what we know over the last 10 years is that where, where costs were pretty much, much fixed, we're seeing a lot more review is being required across the board. For example, we had, we had some people who wanted to build a commercial building, we put 60 hours of review time into the process without any kind of deposit, and then they decided not to build. So you have somebody put that kind of time in, it's tens of, you know, it's $10,000 of review time, and then, and then nothing ever happens, so what we're trying to avoid is that kind of expenditure of staff time. And, and with the deposit, if, if it only takes 10 hours, or five hours, or something like that of review time, they just get everything, you know, everything's refunded that isn't expended. So we're just trying to protect the city.
Okay, and then, don't go anywhere. So on page 32, line 85, where it says work with a penalty, and then it's two times permit cost.
It should be permit.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, but I'm like, maybe there's.
What line was it, Councilwoman?
Line 85, so.
It should say work without a permit.
Work without a permit.
That's kind of what I thought.
That's getting fixed.
I just wanted to make sure that we, that was correct in the final document.
So explain that to people so they understand that.
Sure. So the, in order to do any kind of addition to a property, you, you have to get a permit from the city, because inspections have to take place in order to make sure that they, the building codes are being met. And if you work without a permit, then you're in trouble.
Noncompliant, so.
That's right. You very, very well could be noncompliant, but inspections take place throughout the building process, and as an inspection takes place, and then work gets covered up, and then the next inspection takes place, and then work gets covered up, and so that's why it's important that they pay the, pay the permit fee, pay for the inspections, and, and then we send somebody out to make sure that the, all those rules are being complied with for safety, and it's not just the safety of the present owner, but a future owner that may, may end up buying the home. We want to make sure that the, the home is built properly and safely.
And then that same page has that $69 general service call, and so that was one of the questions that I wanted to follow up on, was how do we, do we or will we have an official policy for when that's triggered?
So I had Frank come in and I know he wants to get up here and answer the water question. And any other water questions you have?
Yeah, the general service calls fee that is being proposed.
So I submitted these probably over a year ago and I had this really neat algorithm of how we came to, I don't specifically remember how we came to the sixty-nine dollars. But the point of this fee is to capture some of the costs associated with customers calling in for things that are related to their own plumbing. So typically, somebody calls in and they're like, hey, I want you to show me how to read the meter or I want you to tell me if we have a leak. And so in the past, we would send an operator. But what's happening now is call volume is up. You know, we've expanded significantly in infrastructure customers. And so the call volume is up. So we're trying to really accomplish two things. One is recoup the cost. And then two is to add some sort of, some sort of a deterrent to make those calls. And I believe that the cost, if I remember correctly, it was either, it was associated with like thirty or forty-five minutes of the fully burdened rate of a water systems operator too.
I guess what I'm trying to understand though is, like if, I know that there's times when our staff will go out to someone's house and neighbor calls, there's water running. Does that mean that resident is now going to automatically get charged sixty-nine dollars?
Uh, no.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so the person that's making the call is, they'll know whether or not, they're going to have to consent to that verbally over the phone. So somebody else can't consent for someone else's meter, if that makes sense.
Right, but sometimes that's on our side, sometimes it's on their side.
So staff can, Frank has done a really great job of creating a document for our customer service reps to say before anyone goes out there, these are the things that you should check for. These are the things that are normally wrong, right? So we can again mitigate and deter staff time, which has been increasing to go out into the field. We already have a policy where if someone is calling after hours, we tell them, you're going to have to pay for an emergency services out call. And we don't go out there until they confirm that they're accepting that emergency service charge. This would be the same because it's overtime, basically. It's not an emergency. They just, it's an emergency to them. So then it's an emergency charge. This would be, if I'm correct, would be a similar situation where we would, if someone calls and says, hey, I have a question on my meter, it doesn't seem right. We would still give them all the same, here's what you should do to check it. And if they say, I still want someone to come out here and we sent, and we would say, okay, but if it's on your side, there will be a charge for sixty-nine dollars. Frank's guys would go out and if it's on our side, that charge wouldn't be applicable.
If the issue is anything related to the water system side, then that's, that's on the water system responsibility. But if it happens to be something that the customer is initiating and is related to their private plumbing, then that's when we would charge that.
So does that mean we will no longer notify residents if we think they have a leak? Or will we charge them to notify them if we think they have a leak?
We already don't do that as a courtesy. If we see something out of the norm, we do. But having customers depends on the city to identify when leaks occur. Then puts the onus on the city to, if we don't catch it, they don't want to pay for the bill. And we've encountered that quite a bit in the past. But that being said, Frank has also, I'm just taking all your glory because I'm saying all the things you're doing. Frank has also, well, two things. One, with the new meters, it's very easy to identify your usage and when leaks are spiking and we communicate that to the public. But we've also established, you remember what we're talking about? Identifying a process, not necessarily for saying you definitely have a leak, but just saying you may have a leak due to high usage.
Yeah, some sort of, some sort of a notification tied to their consumption, monthly consumption for those that didn't have a smart meter.
Yes.
Which is the majority.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, and so I guess that's just what I'm trying to understand is, so this would still sort of indirectly impact those who don't have a smart meter yet. Because you have a smart meter, you can go on and pull up your own usage and see, oh yeah, it looks like I'm trending.
Yeah, but that doesn't really work out the way that you think it does. That even the people that have smart meters, they don't necessarily trust what they're seeing on the graph. And for some of those people, they still want that face-to-face interaction, which we'll gladly do. But I think what's happening is that's really taking away from just the normal day-to-day operations, whether it's installing meters and then they got to just pick up and go and, you know, go talk to a customer with, in relation to their own private plumbing.
And it's multiple calls for the same people sometimes. They just refuse to accept it.
Yeah, and we have like repeat callers, so we're also trying to avoid that. Again, it's a deterrent. If they still want us to go out there, we're still cheaper than what a plumber would cost to go out there. We could still do some minor assessments, but yeah, that's really, that's really all it's supposed to do.
Okay.
Sorry, just for future reference, do you see a lot of variances and spikes and stuff?
So when we do, we have a process where our utility billing accounting specialist is supposed to review and anything, anything above, I want to say like thirty percent, I can't remember the exact number, he will just flag. But the problem is that people's water usage does vary. And we don't know if someone's on vacation. We don't know if, you know, they're using their pool more. We just, and we can't analyze every account. So really drastic ones, we try to identify. But the other ones would not be feasible with seven thousand customers, seven thousand users.
Like eighty-four hundred.
Eighty-four hundred.
Yeah.
And so then when we factored in, I don't know if this, this is a question for you. When we factored in the engineering rate, did we factor that in as a contract engineer? Or did we assume that we have a staff person?
When you say engineering rate, which one?
When we have our fully burdened rates at the beginning, did we do that based on what we have now or what we hoped to have? Or will that have to be changed if that changes?
Pretty, can you confirm that that was staff, staff costs?
Yeah, that is staff cost, not the contractor's rate.
Okay. Alright, that's kind of what I guessed that we did, but I just wanted to check. Does anyone else have public works questions?
Public works? No.
Alright, I think, so then I wanted to circle back around to the business permit. So do we know if someone goes in and they want to do a home occupation and it doesn't require an inspection, what is that going to cost them? Do we know what that is?
Yes. So the home occupation permit plus the business license. Business license will range anywhere from twenty-nine dollars to four hundred and fifty-four dollars, depending on their gross receipts.
And then the two hundred?
And then...
Or what will be two hundred?
Right.
Okay.
And just real quickly, on the inspection, inspection only applies in the event, I think, Christie had a slide in there, but it really only applies if there's some type of impacts to neighborhood or construction.
When did we change that policy?
The home inspection?
Yeah.
On, when we went the last round of home occupation, because we just, most of them were service industry. There's no reason to charge people another eighty-seven dollars when we knew there was no need for it.
I'm happy to hear that we're not doing that anymore and that our home occupation permit, if it doesn't require an inspection, is a much more reasonable amount now. So hopefully that will encourage folks who have a home business to actually get their permit and business license and all of those things because it seems like we finally have moved that in the right direction.
Can you tell us where the animal fees are? I see some listed, but I don't quite understand them.
Page fifty-one for the animal nuisance.
Are you saying nuisance or license?
So license, sorry.
Oh, animal license?
So there's a section on page twenty-eight that says city animal regulation reset by county of Ventura. Altered dog license fee, unaltered license fee. It says zero, zero. Suggested fee county of Ventura, so... On the packet, it, page, yeah, number two and three. Is that different than what our fees are for licensing for animals?
I don't have the packet. Do you have the regular? I'm going to say no. Yeah, of course I get there. I believe it's in line, no, it is in line. It's in line with the county's fees.
What is it?
Oh, I see your question. If Daniel was here, he would know. I do not have that off the top of my head.
I think altered is twenty and unaltered is fifty or fifty-five or something like that. I'm just...
When you say altered, you mean?
Neutered, spayed, yeah. Just paid mine, that's why.
I wonder if Pretty can respond to why there's no fees listed there.
Yeah.
Well, because they are, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Because they're set by the county of Ventura, so if they change their fees, you, they would change with your city also because they're based on the county of Ventura.
But when we had a study session, didn't they tell us that the fees were X amount?
Currently.
Currently?
Mm-hmm.
And those were fees that we were talking about not collecting or coming up with the new system that would be able to collect them better?
That was more on the licensing side, not the amount of the fee.
Yes.
Using a software system that would make it easier.
So the fee we charge, where is that fee?
It is there. It just says county of Ventura because the fee we charge is the county of Ventura fee.
It's the fee.
Yes.
And that goes to the county of Ventura?
No, it stays with us. We just use their fee.
So that a dog license here is the same price as it is in the county of Camarillo?
Yeah.
We, it might be appropriate...
I mean, we should tell people what it is.
To have it say as set by the county of Ventura.
Yeah.
As set by the county of Ventura and make a note currently this much?
Yeah.
Got it.
Because we do want more people to get their license and...
Okay, so changing as set by county as a note and currently X, which I don't have. Okay, noted.
Sorry, Mayor, on the topic of animals while we're there, can we clarify the nuisance calls both for animals and for loud parties? It is page fifty-one or a hundred and twenty-one of the packet. And it's lines one, eleven and twelve. So for animal nuisance, it's a hundred dollars for second. And so, and maybe these are things that we...
Actually, if I could interrupt, I think the city attorney can clarify. Some of, some of this is not consistent with our ordinance or adopting fee resolution, so...
Well, so that was what I was going to ask is on those lines, is it this that's not compliant with the ordinance? Or do we need to update the ordinance to align with this? Or what do we need to do with these lines?
So there's no need to update an ordinance. We set our fees by resolution. But there is, so it's a little mix of both. Our current fee for, or citation fine for dog barking is a hundred dollars for the first complaint. And then here, it's the suggested fee, it's saying a hundred for the second. But in practice, because the city is so compassionate, they'll send a warning first before issuing a fine to give the person complained of a chance to correct it. So, you know, that is something that, that, you know, council can advise our code enforcers not to do or just go ahead and assess that a hundred dollar fine for the first complaint.
Is the suggestion here that we do it for the second because that has been practiced? Because that's how I was reading this, because it says a hundred for second.
Complaint.
It's somewhat semantics.
Slash response.
Okay, but I think it would be helpful for the fee schedule to say a hundred dollars for the first offense, two hundred dollars for the second. Because the warnings that are issued say warning on it. They don't, they don't have an amount to fill in. So you don't need a fee schedule that says it's, you know, a dollar for a warning, right? You see what I'm saying? So if the council's comfortable that we continue to first issue warnings, then really the first citation should be accompanied by an amount.
I thought the first one was just like a...
Well, because, because the warning isn't a citation.
I guess I'm...
It's citing the municipal code and saying your barking dog, let's say, is in violation of this code. And it says on the top of it, warning. And that's, you know, left on their door or it's put on their car or it's handed to a person as a warning. It's like a courtesy. That's not a citation. So I don't think you want a free citation.
Okay, okay, okay.
Right? You want a free warning and then your first citation should have an amount next to it.
Do we always do a warning?
I don't know where the chief went. I know he's on a call, so...
I mean, as long as we did a warning first, then I would be fine if the first citation has an amount. But that's assuming we've had a warning first.
The other issue is that we're not talking about warnings and citations. We're talking about complaints and responses, right? So the first warning, the first time that someone responds, that is the warning. And then the second time is the citation. So it's really a semantics of the language that's being used. So if you wanted to say zero dollars for warnings, a hundred dollars for the first notification or citation, two hundred dollars for the second notification or citation, that would address your concerns.
That clarifies it because there's a doubt as to whether the first one is a, is a warning or the hundred dollars. So that would be helpful, this mention of a, once after a warning has been issued, first citation would be one hundred and second two hundred. It's sort of like a fix-it ticket.
So then would that need to also go to a resolution or can that just be set in here?
Right, your current resolution allows for zero dollar warning, a hundred dollar for first complaint. It does not currently allow for fines to be doubled if there's a second complaint within thirty days.
So at this point, it would just be a hundred dollars for each?
Yes.
I would be okay with that too, for now. But I guess the question is, is, does any language need to change on this fee schedule?
If you change it, if you change the suggested fee to say zero dollar for warnings, a hundred dollars per citation, that would take care of first, second, et cetera.
Chief, I think the primary question was, you know, whether it's a common practice that we issue warnings, especially for animal-related complaints.
It is a practice to do that. When we do do that, you know, we, we document how that contact goes, whether it'd be on a field interview card that is data for us that we can retrieve and go back to and say, hey, we, we already gave this person a warning. We're here again the next day and the same behavior is happening. So yeah, there is, it is, it is somewhat common that we would, depending on what the violation is, if it benefits us to just give them the warning and we believe they're going to comply, we'll go ahead and document the contact and then ensure that we have, we have that information down.
Which then allows you to know if, if the next complaint is really a second one and deserves a citation.
And then eleven and twelve, because there's some inconsistency in how this is written. Because it says nuisance call for service first response on the left. But then you look at the right and it says a hundred dollars for second complaint. And then the second line is second response, two hundred dollars.
Same thing, kind of thing.
So is it a hundred dollars for the second response or is it two hundred dollars for the second response?
Second, so you're saying the first is a warning and the second, the second contact is the second response? So that would be a hundred dollars?
Well, no, I'm saying down lower on this. I don't know if you want to... Well, no, I'm, I'm saying down lower on this. I don't know if you want to look at.
So lines 11 and 12 are saying the nuisance charge currently is no charge for first response, a penalty for a second response. What's being recommended is it's $100 for the, it should have said the first response and then $200 for the second response. It sounds like what the confusing part is the recommendation under line 11 says $100 for second complaint. And that, like you said, the second line below that is $200 for second complaint. So really that should say $100 for first complaint.
So there's no.
There's no warning.
Warning on a.
On a loud party?
We can do the same language that says $0 for warnings, $100.
I think we should be consistent.
Yeah, okay. So $0 for warning, $100 for the first response, first citation, $200 for the second citation.
And I got a question. These are administrative costs above and beyond the citation, which could lead to a punitive fine?
The, the fees are, the fines are administrative in nature, right?
I mean, because first initially they're saying they'll charge $100 just for the, just for the response. But now we're saying if, it would be after the citation. So is that $100 for that citation or is that an administrative fine for the call? And then the citation is separate, punitively?
I'm understanding the $100 is the citation.
So then how do we, i- is it just officer discretion if you've got? So it's one thing if it really is a loud party. I think we all know what that sounds like. If the reporting party is not being reasonable, this doesn't automatically apply, correct? Like, for example, oh, there's a, there's a ruckus party going on next door and they show up and there's a little girl with her, you know, iPad, her phone, sitting in the front yard, listening to music you can't hear from the street, but the neighbors decided they don't like her in her front yard, right? She's not going to get cited $100, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to understand.
The officer has to assess the scene and make the determination.
Many times if there's loud music coming from a party, and, you know, obviously we're there or we get called and, you know, we can hear music as we're rolling up four houses down, we're gonna, we're gonna make contact and give them a fair warning because if we, we tell them, we come back, they're gonna receive a citation. And usually that's enough for compliance.
Okay.
And by using the language $0 for warnings, it doesn't have to be the first warning. It could be at the officer's discretion, like you said.
Okay. Let me jump in here real quick. So the, the line 12, penalty per city municipal code 9335A4. I'm gonna read that section. That 93.35 is notice of disturbance, host signatures for second responses. So when police officers respond to a noise or other disturbance complaint or the noise source is an event, the police officers may but are not required to issue written notice to the host stating as follows. And four is such additional responses, meaning after the first response by police officers, will constitute special services, the cost of which must be paid by the host. Any such costs will become the host's personal obligation and be a debt to the city. So I would, I, I think it's sufficient to reference our municipal code here. And then we can just, I mean, it sounds like there's special police services costs that are calculated by some formula. And that formula maybe should be added here somewhere or some citation.
Is that only for second response?
That is required to return. Oh, no, it's. It could, it could be the, any, after they've come to the noise source. Any, it says additional responses.
So for lines.
Will constitute special.
So for lines 11 and 12, the recommendation is for suggested fee to just have the same penalty per city municipal code language? Is what you're saying?
That's how I would cover it.
Okay. Does that municipal code establish a fee to charge?
It does not. It just refers to special police services. And I, I would think that there might be a, a fine schedule somewhere that covers what it costs to respond to a, a party's disturbance.
Yeah, the costs, the costs of this, you know, what that formula of the officers, the time and the salary of the officer would be computed for that.
Perfect.
So.
So, yeah, so what happens with lines 11 and 12? Is this something that's gonna come back to us then with those fixed?
We, we're hoping to get it adopted today. So that's why I was asking if the changes are just to say penalty per city municipal code, just having that be in the suggested fees. Your city municipal code already recognizes that it's the costs, like the chief said, that's really the fully burdened cost of the officer's time.
Wait, can you, you said something just now regarding, you're asking for us to adopt this completely and not come back?
We were hoping to get that adopted today so that it goes into effect 60 days from now and have it effective July, January 1st. But if council's not comfortable with that, of course.
I mean, it sounds reasonable that the municipal codes specifically states 193.35, the, the fine and the administrative costs. I mean, it's in there.
Mm-hmm.
If I could, I think we need to establish fee so that everybody knows what to expect, so that it's not a random fee decided. I just think it needs to be cleared up a little bit because the current fee says no charge, suggested fee probably should say no charge, like we're saying for the warnings, for the first call, second for, 100 for second complaint. And then the next line, that's actually, well, there's a disparity between $100 for second response and $200 for second response.
Yeah, that's why I, that's why I called it.
Yeah, we should clear that up.
Just make sure we knew what we were.
Yeah.
Approving tonight.
I mean, we could, it's all based on the municipal code that we could establish the fees. So that almost would be third response. Because you've got your warning or first contact, then second response or complaint, $100, and then third response would be the $200.
Correct.
So it's escalating. Is that what we're trying to do? And if that's so, it's just not stated clearly in the, in this suggested fees.
So, not, not regarding what you're mentioning on this item, but, for instance, parks and rec, right? We have a lot of teams, groups, nonprofits, organizations that are going to be affected by this. We just got an award for community outreach, right? Did we outreach to the community letting them know, hey, the council's gonna talk about fees? Because what's gonna happen is we adopt some sort of fee without letting the users know that this is happening, then what's gonna happen? They're gonna come back and then, oh, we adopted, we didn't listen to them. And there's no one here during public hearing, obviously, because most of this stuff gets into an agenda without really outreach to those impacted.
I mean, it was advertised, it was advertised in the newspaper, but.
No offense, but the newspaper in this day and age?
Mayor, I, I feel that having, being on the Harding Park, which deals a lot with the fees, I think everybody is very aware of what the fees are and what, and the need for these increases. They're not drastic, they're reasonable. And I know that in special circumstances, now we don't want a barrage of everyone coming, but in special circumstances, having set fees, we would have the ability to vote to waive a particular fee for a particular situation. That would have to be a plea on a special situation. But I think, you know, our, you know, going back to the parks, I know we're doing two subjects right now, but when, our parks are really well-maintained and they are known for being, they're in demand because they're in such good condition. They're in such good condition because we have so much staff and so much money put in to make them what they are. So, and we won't lack for the demand for those fields. And we do discount a lot for the nonprofits. So I, I think they have to be aware of the costs and especially if they haven't, we haven't done any of these fee changes for a long time. I, I think that it's, it would be understandable. Maybe, it looks like Director Barnes is ready to speak to this as well, so. But that's just my take on it, I think. And he deals with it far more than I, but I have a feeling, I, I feel that they're reasonable, what we're asking.
Well, it's been 10 years too since any increase. But I, I will say as far as outreach, I, I won't make the statement that I called everybody to let them know, but I did fulfill one request who asked to, one of the leagues asked or representative from one of the leagues asked for some information, sent him the document so he was able to review and asked him to reach out to me. He knew it was coming to council and if he had questions. And then I was asked by one group to keep him, to keep them informed of when fees were going. And I sent him a direct email saying that council was meeting tonight to discuss fees. So I won't say I reached out to every group, but, but, and that's specifically our category two users so that they knew, the ones that did ask to be kept up on it, I made sure that they knew that it was coming tonight. I, I won't say that's all of our users and everyone that uses the parks, but we did, those that have kind of paid attention or interested, made sure to have that conversation with them.
How, how does an accommodation happen for a special circumstance, for a group coming and saying, hey, these fees?
I think it's similar to what we did with Harding Park, right? Come to council and say, hey, here's their request regarding fees, whether that's a waiving fees, capping fees. You know, it would be brought to you for consideration. Staff would bring forward and let you know the revenue that's been generated so you can see what's, what, what that impact or that decision would make on, on revenue or, or for budget, and then it would just be brought to council.
Parks and Rec Commission potentially could be where those requests would go first?
It could be. So Harding, so with Harding, you know, the Harding Park Advisory Board kind of like reviewed it and then made the recommendation to support it coming to council. And it could be the same. We could go to Parks and Rec and say, look, here's the request. As a commission, do you support this moving forward to council? I mean, they're more of an advisory group, but they would be able to provide feedback for council. And then we can bring it in front of all of you for review.
And then once it gets adopted, right, so it goes into effect January 1st, they'll be like, when they come for an application, are most applications done in paper or online?
A combo of both. Some like to come into the office and fill it out and some are able. I mean, it's not really an online necessarily application, but they're able to fill it in and just send it to us digitally. So we're, it's a little bit, and we can even invoice them using our software. So they can just pay online. So it's a, it kind of depends on the user and how they feel comfortable.
So the fees will get updated in that system so they know in advance?
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And the state law provides that the fees can't take effect for 60 days. And I think part of the purpose is so that the public has the time to understand it and be aware. If you'd like, I mean, we can, after, if council adopts tonight, we can make sure the final version gets put on our website. And we can even get it out there, social media-wise, well, you know, well before January.
Okay.
Just, I remember exceptions were made because of COVID because people weren't able to do their regular fundraising and people were hurting financially because of those circumstances. So it was, you know, unusual circumstances that warranted exceptions to be made. So those kinds of exceptions can be brought to us for consideration.
And I think I have language for you for 11 and 12. If you keep the penalty per city municipal code 9335A4 and add for both of those and add currently the fully burdened hourly rate for the officer responding, that will give the, quote, give the fee, because they can just refer to the fully burdened hourly rate, and still keep the language that matches the municipal code.
Which means it's gonna cost how much?
You can refer to the fully burdened hourly rate for the officer that goes out. That's the same as anyone else that, anywhere else that says fully burdened hourly rate or actual costs, they refer to that.
So it would be, for example, the time they were dispatched, they go to the call, if they have to write a citation, whatever else their business is, and then the time they clear the call. So that would be the, that would be the timeframe we would, we would look at that. And then the burden, the fully burdened rate of the officer would be put into that for the formula.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if we had a set, like you get a warning, there's a citation, and then if you have the third time, essentially.
Sure.
Responding.
Yeah.
Then it's fully burdened hourly rate, but.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
I feel like there needs to be an expectation of. What that's.
Like Vice Mayor just said, what if there's two officers or three officers answer the call? We can't just.
The fine's 100, but the administrative cost is like 400.
So, so if we give a citation, we give the warning, we go back, we give a citation, and then we go back another time, that's, that's a situation that's kind of gotten out of hand and we have to get, get control of that. So that, that's where we would burden some of the, we burden the costs on, on the call to have it resolved. And if it's a, you know, a large raging party that requires three officers to come and spend 15 minutes to try and make sure everybody gets out safely and nobody's intoxicated and unable to care for themselves and those kind of things, those things happen. Not often, but they, they happen. And those would be situations where you may need all those officers there to quickly dissipate any crowds and resolve the call as quickly as possible.
Chief, I just want to clarify, I wasn't saying we don't need the three officers. I'm just saying for the sake of what we're trying to do and get like a clear understanding of the fees, it would be hard to put a number on it if that's what we're hoping to do versus leaving it open-ended because, like you said, it could require three or more to get a situation under control. I get that, even if it may not happen a lot.
So it sounds like council ironically is looking to go back to the original language that we had, which is $100 for first citation, 200 for second citation. Monica, is it a real issue?
I'm not taking away from what's said about the officer's hourly rate. I just want to make sure that we all agree and we understand what we're putting here.
And, and these, and these were vetted by the chief. So at one point, these were acceptable, the 100 and 200. The only reason why we started this conversation was because Monica brought up the language that is, it's not necessarily in contradiction with 93.
So, just, I want to point out that these are different ordinances. There's a, a dog noise ordinance and then there's a party noise ordinance. So that's, there are gonna be different fines associated with those violations.
We're just talking about 11 and 12 right now, I think. So can we say?
11, 12 is party noise.
Yeah. So can we say $100 first, $200 second and not worry about the municipal code? Because the municipal code states, doesn't state the fees?
The, the municipal code does not state the fees, but it does say the cost should be the special police services costs.
So.
So my recommendation again is to just cite to the code and not give a, a dollar amount because what I'm hearing is it might take multiple officers to come out to an event.
But that doesn't address council's concern of they want a flat, an understandably clear identified.
Well, we'd at least like a warning first, and that doesn't seem to include a warning.
Well, this, it says the officer may, but is not required to issue a notice.
So it's discretion?
A good number of times we'll give the warning, most of the time, unless, you know. And then if we come back, then we go to the citation route.
It matters how they're addressed, no? Some people could be very rude when they answer the door or.
I mean, do you want to leave it to law enforcement discretion? I think that's typical.
So if we just cite the municipal code and strike what's on the right, that would leave it up to discretion?
Correct.
Thank you, Moni. Would it be for second and third or would it be for all of them because the municipal code?
Well, we want the first one to be a warning, right?
It.
Depends, depends on the situation.
Yeah.
Do you want to tie their hands?
Discretion.
I think you should give them the discretion to determine based on what they see on.
So second responses are also discretionary here too?
Yeah.
So citing that municipal code will give them that warning discretion? Okay.
So that would go on both lines then?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So 11 and 12.
Okay, so 11 and 12 would become penalty person.
The question, could the administrative part be optional? Like just list $100 after the warning and then the second time with $200? And then the, the section 93.35 being optional? to file it?
Well, you then have to make it consistent with a fine, an admin fine schedule that you have to adopt by resolution, so that's something for a broader discussion, that's probably not going to be settled here.
So, if we leave it to this discretion of the department, and the department knows when they make a warning, look, this could get ugly, because the fees could really be expensive if we have to come back again, so, you know, if, if they're giving warnings like that, and then they continue, then, you know, how do, how do you pick an amount, depending on the situation?
Okay, we're moving on, I think we have enough on that one, right? Question for Ms. Patel? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
When was the report submitted to the city? The study?
This one was just updated a few days ago.
And that update was based on feedback from departments?
Yes.
Regarding probably new fees and stuff? But when was the initial report submitted, the completed product, the initial draft?
Let me look back. The initial report back in May?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to say, Maureen.
All right, anything else on this? No?
I have a question.
Yes, go for it.
My understanding, line 31 says police officer, and then it has a fee, what does that mean, or what is that for? It just says police officer, I don't know if it ties to something else?
So, so we have our fully burdened rates that are per, per position, and that's fully, fully burdened, but when you're dealing with filming permits, or you're dealing with anything that is flat rates, there, it's much easier to use flat rates, so, some time ago, within the past five years, we went to council, or actually it might have been within the last user fee schedule as well, and we went to council and said, this is around the fee that incorporates both the police officer, a little bit of oversight from their supervisor as well, so when we, and again, it's mostly dealt with for filming permits, when they go out and they do filming permits, this would be the, the cost.
What about parades?
For what?
Parades?
Parades as well, yes.
Should it say something to that, or does that, is that just implied in police officer?
It's, it's implied, and you'll see it as well in other departments, that had very few line items that were just general, there was another one, let me look. I can't remember, but there was another one that, we made sure to include, to keep those in there, those fully burdened hourly rates, otherwise you go back to charging for every police officer, the exact, and it fluctuates.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying to take it off, I just didn't understand.
Yes.
It just, it doesn't have any explanation there of what it's in reference to, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it is confusing, because we used to have a specific page that said basically fully burdened rates, and it had these, maybe like seven or eight positions, and now they're just incorporated into the departments.
Follow-up question, Maureen.
Yeah.
Several years ago, when there was a full complement of reserve police officers, they used this formula for the officer's flat rate, for the, for the officers and the reserves, so they both got, the company, film companies got that same amount, is there a separate line item for reserves now?
Yes, so we included that as a footnote to the full, fully burdened rates, to say actual cost for reserve officers.
But it's not here, close to this?
No, it's in a different section.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional questions before we close the public hearing? All right, we're in discussion and action. Counsel would like to proceed with a motion.
Is this a move to receive and file, or for follow-up?
It's to adopt.
Adopt?
You're adopting the resolution.
As amended.
Okay, I move to receive and adopt as amended.
May, may I read into the record the amendment and the resolution first?
Sure.
Okay. Right, so the amendment being made to the resolution will be in section three, that will now read in full, the City Council of the City of Santa Paula has resolved that the fees as shown in Exhibit A are hereby adopted and will become effective as of January 1st, 2026. Fee adjustments based on the prior calendar year's annual average consumer price index for the Los Angeles region will be reviewed during the regular budget process, and no event will an approved fee adjustment exceed the cost for providing the services.
Do you want me to read the amendments to the fee schedule?
That's what I was just going to ask.
Okay, so I have for, on page 32 of the study, for public works fees, line item 85, to change work without a penalty to work without a permit, I have finance fees on page 28, line number two and three, to include in the notes as set by the county and currently at their current rates listed, line number 13, to identify business licenses for 250 per day specifically for film permits, and the one that we just talked about, which is page 51, to identify item number one, suggested fee, $0 for warnings, $100 per citation, lines 11 and 12, to change the suggested fee to penalty per city municipal code 93.35A4.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any additional questions? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ornellis?
Yes.
And I think your thing was off, so that's a yes vote for Councilmember Ornellis?
Yes.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Juarez?
Yes.
And Mayor Chavez?
No.
We have 4-1 as passing, thank you.
Motion passes, thank you, 11B, introduction of ordinance number 1350.
Can we have a really short break, please?
Five minute.
It doesn't even need to be five minutes, just a short.
Are you getting sick? We're reconvening, item 11B, introduction of ordinance number 1350, Ms. Castillo.
Verification of posting notice.
Yes.
Mayor, did you want to go through the public hearing steps?
Yeah, open the public, receive public testimony, close the public hearing, and...
No declaration of conflict?
Sorry. Verification of posting notice by city clerk?
Yes.
Declaration of any conflicts, if any, declaration of exportate contacts, if any, okay, open public hearing, staff presentation, Ms. Castillo.
Thank you.
You've got five minutes.
Madam Clerk, do you have the PowerPoint?
Yes, I'll go very quickly, council, public, you have seen this many times already, we're on development code update number seven, as we typically do, we do an overview, we go over a development code update status, we describe what the amendments are being, the amendments being considered today, and then we will discuss tentative next steps. Our development code was, has not undergone a comprehensive update since 1997, there are 10 titles in our municipal code that we are reviewing systematically, starting with our development code, and I will go through this quickly, in November, council adopted its ADU ordinance in, in November of 2024, and then April of 2025, we adopted the second set of development code amendments, in June 4th, 2025, we developed, we adopted the third set, in July 2025, we adopted the fourth set, and removed some sections for deeper consideration, including the primary dwelling unit development standards and the inclusionary housing ordinance, in September, we looked at the fifth set of development code amendments, and that included some performance standards, fences and walls and hedges, and then we referred back to planning commission, a section on light and glare, and then last month, we looked at development code set six, and that consisted of renumbering, we also amended the alcohol beverages sale section, so that the enforcement agreement no longer had to go to council, but could be approved by our police chief, we also amended the vending machine section to allow vending machines by a use permit instead of a conditional use permit, which is a much more involved process, we also amended our electrical vehicle charging station section to require better lighting, and we also finally amended our subdivision regulations such that there is no council approval required for parcel maps unless it includes an offer of dedication, so tonight's amendment is similarly renumbering, and we will be renumbering chapters 16200 through 16...
Oh, there's a section that's currently called the 81 Acre Initiative Implementation, but it's related to the city's, what was, the new one is Measure U under the 2016 SOAR. But that section references the SOAR that had passed prior, but it never, the, when the new SOAR was updated, it doesn't seem to have been incorporated in. So it looks like there's changes in that section that need to be made. Um, because it just references, uh, and, well, because it only goes up to 2025. December 31st, 2025 is when it says this whole thing sunsets. And it doesn't seem to recognize the 2050 of Measure U. So we just need to see if there's changes related to the new SOAR initiative that need to be incorporated, whether it's here or somewhere else. I'm not sure that that actually got incorporated when it was passed by the voters. Because I know that some of this 81 acre thing got incorporated in to the new one. So I think some of it is still relevant, but there's definitely dates and things that I think need to be updated.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Any, any other feedback while we're in these sections? You'll have another opportunity to look at this when it returns to you.
And, and just since the director is here, I think to the council member's point regarding vendors, I think it's a deeper conversation the city has to have because most people that are doing the vending, it's for necessity. It's because they're not making enough money to survive. And so what do we find common ground and help them be compliant, right? Um, at the same time, help uplift them as well. Because some great ideas start in someone's backyard or someone's garage and they can become brick and mortar. They can be, you know, future businesses that employ more people. And so, um, I think maybe looking and having a discussion about what that ecosystem looks like and what we can do to provide support services and, um, ability, uh, you know, um, a, a roadmap. I think most of the time, a lot of folks don't know how to navigate. And so the city can provide some navigation services in regards to small business development. I'm looking at the website now, for instance, and I noticed that there's like a 12-step section on here. And there's some just outdated links that don't work anymore. So we might want to look at that. But to your point, having that conversation at some point in time. All right, is there a motion to adopt with the proposed revisions and amendments?
Is this a long-winded one again, or?
Yes.
I moved that Monica Reed and I'll.
I can do that.
Well.
If you'd like.
Thank you. Uh, which one is it? I mean, okay, thanks.
Okay, so that is, um, that we weigh, I move that we waive the first hearing by title only. That's that paragraph, right? And introduce ordinance number 1350 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapters 16.200 Administration General Provisions, 16.202 Applications Processing Filing and Fees, 16.204 Public Hearings, 16.206 Appeals and Revocations, 16.208 Development Code Amendments, 16.210 Zone Change, 16.212 General Plan Amendments, 16.214 Agriculture Preserve and Land Conservation Contracts, 16.216 Specific Plans, 16.218 Conditional Use Permits, 16.220 Variances, 16.222 Minor Modifications, 16.224 Zoning Clearance, 16.227 Accessory Dwelling Units, 16.228 Temporary Use Permit, 16.230 Home Occupation Permit, 16.234 Development Agreements, 16.236 Annexations, 16.237 81 Acre Initiative Implementation, and 16.238 Site Development Permit of Title 16 Development Code of the San Poli Municipal Code in order to correct inconsistencies, outdated language and formatting, and finding the action to be statutory exempt from CEQA under Section 15061B3 of the Public Resources Code.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion second. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are moving on to item, uh, 12A, Appointment of Commissioners, Commissions and Committees. Ms. Latchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just run through this quickly, just so the public does understand what we have gone through for the last few days on our committees and commissions and the appointments being made this evening. The City Council held applicant interviews yesterday, October 14th, to fill the following. We had one Parks and Recreation Commission Youth for a one-year term. There were two individuals interviewed. We had the Parks and Recreation Regular Commission with two vacancies for three-year terms, and there were three individuals interviewed. And one of those individuals was also a returning applicant. We had the Planning Commission to fill one partial term ending May 2nd of 2027, and there were six applicants interviewed. And then we also had the Senior Advisory Committee with two vacancies for two-year terms. And we had one applicant interviewed, and also we still have an additional applicant as returning who can be appointed from there if that is the, the, the council's wish. For our strategic plan, this item's not a goal or objective in the City Council's two-year strategic plan. However, it is, it does support the council's vision to provide the residents of San Pola with sustainable resources and programs to make this a great place to live and grow. And staff recommends that council make appointments to the various commissions and committees.
Uh, Ms. Latchell, can you let me borrow that cover sheet again?
You can.
Sorry, I left it in my bag. Uh, this one.
This one?
Do you have that one?
I'd like to use this one. I have to ask you more than if you would.
So we're going to go through the, um, the, the easy ones first. So let's start with the Senior Advisory Committee. There's two positions for two open terms, two-year terms, and we have two candidates, Sylvia De Los Santos Reisi and Veronica Giron Stone. Is everyone in favor of appointment of these two candidates?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the two candidates for the Senior Advisory Committee?
I would just point out that one is a returning. We weren't able to interview her yesterday, but she is a returning, um, committee member.
So noted.
So, so replaying. That was Veronica Stone.
Were you making a motion?
Yes, and I would move that we, if we can in one motion, that we approve both candidates, Veronica Giron Stone and Sylvia De Los Santos Reisi.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second. Any additional comments or discussion?
I do have one comment. Since we didn't get a chance to interview Veronica Giron Stone, I do sit as the liaison, as does Councilmember Cornejo, to the senior advisory, and I've seen her in action, and I'm really appreciative of the work that she does and the input that she gives.
All right. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Two appointments are set. We are going to the Parks and Recreation Commission Youth. We have two young people vying for a one-year term. We have Lorena Long and Natalia Mansilla, both exceptional candidates. Their energy that they brought, I was like, oh, they're both going to serve in some capacity at some time, right? Is there any conversation on a specific choice members want to make? We can do straw poll.
This is really hard. There, I wish we had two positions because they're both wonderful. And I, I, I was struck by Lorena, Lola, um, just, again, just, that's probably just gut than anything else over qualifications because they're both equally qualified and wonderful people. But, um, that I would, I don't know if you're doing a straw poll or, or, but I'm happy with both.
Let's just do a thumbs up if you'd like to put your vote towards Lorena, Lola.
Again, I'd.
They're both.
I, they're both, they're both, they both seem great and they both bring different things. And so I guess that's where it's like, it's, it's hard to.
I agree, they're both good. Lorena seems to have a lot more experience in a lot of different groups she serves on or things that she does, which is amazing. And I see her continuing to do great things. The thing that stood out for me on Natalia is she does year-round sports and she does have a business that she's starting. I just thought of me being a kid here in San Pola, starting my community work at 12 or 13. And I thought that her serving on here would be a good opportunity for her to strengthen the work that she is doing with Ms. Chris, like she mentioned, um, at different community events and building her skills on speaking to people or understanding of how things work or putting on an event or, I like that she plays the sports, not that that's a necessity to be on, but, um, it could highlight maybe, um, areas that we can strengthen that for our community. And that she also has a business mind in her, selling her cookies. But then Lorena brings all of her experience with everything that she has done and currently does. I just wanted to speak on how great of a candidate they each are in their own space. I think that, I mean, I sit on that, um, commission as a representative for us as council. So I could see both of them doing great. Again, I just wanted to bring it up because, um, it's a wonderful opportunity.
And luckily, it's a one-year term. So, you know, if it doesn't happen this round, it can happen next round because the term ends June 30th. And I know that Natalia's a 10th grader.
And these are really hard. That's why some of the hardest, most difficult things we do are these appointments, the, uh, selecting amongst amazing candidates.
So, um, again, let's do just a straw poll. Lorena, thumbs up. Two.
Or, does someone just want to make a motion? Because I would support either one.
Okay, I make a motion, I make a motion to, uh, Lorena Lola Long to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee for the term of one year.
I would second.
All's in favor, say aye.
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 All right, consensus.
And I do hope that, uh, the other candidate will watch for other opportunities to, to get involved.
I don't want her to be discouraged. I think she's very valuable to have on anything we have within the community. So her voice anywhere, um, would be very valuable.
I agree.
Absolutely. All right. Next one up, we're going to jump over to Parks and Recs Commission, two, three-year terms. We have one person that is, uh, coming back, and that's Vanessa Olmos. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Vanessa Olmos for another, uh, three-year term.
I move to nominate Vanessa Olmos for the, one of the, one of the two three-year terms.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any comments about Vanessa? I think she's.
She's amazing.
Yeah. All right. All's in favor.
She's, she, she's spoke at council meetings, she speaks at community events on behalf of the commission. She's been very vol, involved and, um, really stepped into that leadership role.
And is there a second? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Vanessa is coming back, yay. And then now we have three candidates to choose from for the second position. Any comments that want to be made about a specific candidate?
One.
Yep.
Um, Valeria did not interview.
No.
Did not come. So I, my understanding is that we need to remove her. That's not my choice, but I understand that she's to be removed. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Um, yes, she had chose not to be interviewed and is removed from here.
Thank you for that.
This staff report had gone out before, um, the interview schedule had gone out.
Thank you for that clarification.
The second one's a tough one.
This one was also tough, as I feel like they both bring very different perspectives, but they both, you know, one has a lot more sort of the, the hospitality side of, of community and the other one, you know, has very much the, the environmental piece and the experience of having kids playing in the parks. And so they're just two very different perspectives and we only have one more spot. And I think that they both bring, uh, gifts that we, I don't think we have currently in our composition of really great folks. So it's, um.
I'm just looking at the, um, do you have that sheet by any chance? I said I wasn't, I reminded everyone to bring it, and then I forgot it. The one that has the, the Maddy Act.
Oh, I got it.
Sometimes I, I look at the composition of the committee to help maybe assess. So Brad is out, Vanessa is in, Anna Varela, Chris, uh, Chris is still on here, right? Oh, no, that's.
No. Wait.
No, Chris is on here, yeah, yeah. So we got Vanessa, Anna, Chris, Maria Cassidy. I'm going to recommend, I, I think Brady, in this circumstance, would be the candidate.
And I could support that. I definitely want to encourage the other applicant to still watch for more opportunities to get involved because I, I also think that she brings some really great gifts that could be beneficial to the city, so, but I could support.
Is there a motion for Brady? Or you wanted to make a comment?
Just a quick comment, then I could make a motion. I would agree as well. They're just very different skill sets and approaches, and both valuable. I do think with, um, pardon me, Brady Mang, he has logistics, parking, transportation, and that might be an addition to the events that we do through Parks and Rec. Certainly some enthusiasm. I can see where Tessa Lenz could, uh, not only on this commission be an asset to other boards and provisions in our, in our community as well. So I think also with very valuable skills and the interest in our community. You never want, you never want this to, to kill anyone's desire to, to volunteer or be a part of our community. So that's the worry, that you're discouraging someone if, if you don't. But I would, I would support Brady Mang. I can make that as a motion if you wish.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Cornejo. So is a motion to support Mr. Brady?
And I'll second.
There's a second? All's in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Mr. Brady is now on the Parks and Recs Commission for a two-year term, for a three-year term, sorry. Now we got the last, um, planning commissions. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, six candidates. Why don't I just go around and say, pick your top two?
Well, can I make?
Or do you want to, and then see how that falls?
Well, if you want to start that way, that's fine. I just have somebody that I, to me, came up and rose to what we should be looking at for where we're at in this point in time, but certainly. So we interviewed six, and, and one of them that quickly rose to what I believe to be just a great wealth of experience was David Ross. Three years as Ventura County Thousand Oaks and Planning, I believe, landowner, assistant prog, project manager, um, and also was with Lafco. Very well spoken, uh, skills, obviously interested in, in governance. And, uh, Thousand Oaks with a master plan, their community. Zoning is crucial, expanded, um, on residential areas, uh, and he knew quite a bit about transparency, the Brown Act, ex parte communications, um, expanded on, let's see, factors, city resources, schools, traffic, so kind of full, full spectrum. And I looked at it that with every, all development that we have going on and coming up in the near future, he comes with a wealth of knowledge. But that's just, that's just for me. Thank you.
Okay. Can we pick the top two and then see where that all lines up? Or is it just top one? Uh, you want to start with, if you had two choices, what would those two choices be?
My second choice, um, microphone, sorry. So I, I did have a kind of a rating. So the second person that stuck in my mind has also been equally, I mean, there, several of them were. Uh, the second in my mind was Brittany Martinez.
Okay, so we have David and Brittany.
Yes.
Ms. Ronellas, do you want to give two choices?
I had David and Cheryl.
Okay, David and Cheryl. Okay, I'll put that down. Ms. Cornejo?
David and Brittany.
So we got David and Brittany. Okay, Ms. Crosswhite?
Well, I had David, Brittany, and Cheryl, but probably David and Brittany.
So David and Brittany, okay. And then I had David and Cheryl. So that's four. And, okay, so it looks like the one that got the most is four, uh, which is David. Would someone entertain a motion to appoint David?
Mayor, I would, I would make a motion to appoint David Ross on the Planning Commission for one process term ending May 2nd of 2027.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Ross? All right. All right. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the Planning Commission, David Ross. And again, thank you, Ms. Latchell, for getting this all taken care of and making the process smooth and making sure we had all the documents we needed for review. And to all the candidates who applied for, uh, to be part of our public service team. And again, don't give up if you want to continue being in service to the, your city. There's also going to be other opportunities, and we're always having people that have terms that end or someone might move away. So, uh, please stay connected.
Well, I would request that next time when we go to advertise for our Leadership Academy, that we keep track of all of the folks that we have interviewed for interest in planning commission, plant, different committees, and send a thing out to them, letting them know about that opportunity to participate directly since they've already expressed interest or have recently been appointed to something. I think it would be good to directly invite them.
Yeah.
Through that process.
Great suggestion. And we were brainstorming since we only got like eight applicants this last go-around, how we could bolster that. And one of the thoughts was to invite all of our committee and commissioners and to do it with more of a personal letter, not just, uh, here's the flyer, so.
And I'm thinking to expand that to.
Yes.
Even the folks that.
Interested applicants.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And Tessa in particular, I saw her prick up when, uh, the bank, the Baranca was mentioned. And so if there's a way to connect her with Director Barnes, I know he's always looking for people to help in projects and stuff that through Parks and.
Which one was that?
Uh, Tessa.
Tessa.
The environmental, the.
Yes. Okay, Tessa, okay. Got it.
All right. Next item, 12C, Resolution on Establishing Compensation for Members of the Planning Commission and Mobile Home Park Rent Commission.
[inaudible].
Ordinance by adopting reference to California Building Standards Code. All right. All right, come on up.
Is this on? It's on? Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Dan Schultz, City of San Pola's Chief Building Official. And I'm here to look to introduce ordinance 1349, adopting by reference the California Building Standards Code Edition 2025 of the California Code of Regulations, Title 24, the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and the 2024 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission gets together and reviews the current, uh, building codes that they want to adopt, um, and every local jurisdiction is required to adopt. And tonight, I'm here to, uh, present to you this ordinance and recommend that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1349. Recommend that the City, City Council schedule a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance at the next City Council regular meeting of November 5th, 2025, and direct the city clerk to publish a summary of the proposed ordinance and provide notice of the public hearing twice, at least 14 days before the public hearing in which the proposed ordinance is to be considered for adoption, and take such additional related actions as may be desired. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Questions from council members? Yes, Ms. Crosswhite?
I just have one question. I know that, uh, we do this periodically from time to time, but do we know if there's any functional impact to this that we know of?
Not particularly. I haven't noticed any significant changes in the building codes that, that we're currently considering. The most significant change is that they have actually incorporated the Wild and Urban Interface Code into the building codes of the, the California Code of Regulations. Chapter seven was reserved and was mostly blank, and now that's being adopted and incorporated. The international urban wildlife code is being implemented in that.
Okay, thank you.
In regarding to garage conversions, I know there's been changes to allow that to happen, work fully and compliant with what the state changes were in regards to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right. So, there's recommendations. Who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Just this one clarification. So, if I'm reading this correct, it says, in the middle of the, of the whole report, it says, "And Acts Swimming Pool Safety Acts, Act." That means delimit, right? And Acts Swimming Pool Safety Act.
AJ Existing Structures and AX Swimming.
Oh.
Oh, those are AX.
AX, not Axe. Okay. I read that wrong. All right. All right, yeah, I'll, sorry about that. Okay. It's getting late. All right, here I go.
Those are appendices in the, in the back of the building code.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right, so, here I go. My turn to read. Okay, so, um, I will move to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number eight, 1349, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Pola, Amending Sections 150.001, 150.015, 150.025, 150.045, 150.055, 150.075, 150.085, 150.150, 150.156, 150.157, 150.180, 150.190, and adding 150.200 and 150.210 of Chapter 150 of the San Pola Municipal Code to adopt by reference the California Building Standards Code, 2025 Edition California Code of Regulations, Title 24, including the 2025 California Administrative Code, Volumes 1 and 2, of the 2025 California Building Code, the 2025 California Residential Code, including appendices, AH Patio Covers, AJ Existing Structures, and AX Swimming Pool Safety Act, the 2025 California Electrical Code, the 2025 California Mechanical Code, the 2025 California Plumbing Code, including Appendix M Peak Water Demand Calculator, the 2025 California Energy Code, the 2025 California Wild, Wildland Urban Interface Code, the 2025 California Historical Billing Code, the California Existing Billing Code, the 2025 California Green Billing Standards Code, the 2025 California Reference Standard Code, the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and the 2024 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. And two, schedule a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance. ordinance at the City Council's regular meeting of November 5th, 2025, and to direct the city clerk to publish a summary of the proposed ordinance and provide notice of the public hearing twice, at least 14 days before the public hearing, at which the proposed ordinance is to be considered for adoption, and to take such additional related action as may be desired.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second?
I'll second.
There's a second discussion? There wasn't a 67 in there, was there?
I think so. Was there?
No, that's key. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. You got the 67?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
All right, 12C, consideration resolution establishing compensation for members of the Planning Commission and Mobile Home Rent Commission. Your last item, sir?
Great. I apologize for the shortness of the resolution attached to this, but we'll work on that next time. Wow. So, before you, we have two resolutions, Resolution 7591 and Resolution 7594, which would be to approve the compensation structure for Mobile Home Rent Review Commission and the Planning Commission. We appeared before you on September 17th and talked about our city ordinance, which basically, the municipal code section 152.06A4 states that commission members and their alternates may be compensated for their services in an amount established by resolution of City Council, which is why we're here tonight. In the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, in our city ordinance, it refers to them having a compensation. We couldn't find any record of resolution that was passed by council to identify what their compensation should be. The Planning Commission did have compensation at $50 per meeting. Following the meeting, council provided recommendation that we come back with an update to the Planning Commission with a resolution, and an update for this Mobile Home Rent Control, Mobile Home Rent Review Committee, and the recommendation was $100 per meeting. If you notice in the fiscal impacts, we kind of looked at what the difference would be as far as that change, and the estimated amount for Planning Commission would be about $5,000 for a year, and given the history of the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, which is very difficult to assess because it's so sporadic, but just the idea of having three meetings within a year would be, for three members, would be $900.
All right.
But I can't answer any questions as far as-
Just question for clarification regarding the planning commissioners. Does it specify in particular that these are just planning commission meetings? Because there's some commissioners that serve on other meetings.
No, it, for both of them, it is.
Okay.
Whatever meetings that are associated with their service. For example, if we had a joint meeting with Planning Commission and, and council.
That would not-
It would, it would, would count also.
Oh, it would count?
Yes.
So also standing committees?
Pardon me?
So like, isn't Planning Commission and Housing?
Oh, that's a good question. It's-
So we're paying people to serve?
Well, because we don't get paid extra for the standing committees.
Correct.
I would think it would, should only be for-
It's assigned for their duties as planning commissioners.
Planning Commission meetings.
So is that defined? Could we make sure that that's defined only for serving as a planning commissioner on the Planning Commission?
So we would go for, I could say for regular or special meetings associated with their services, planning commissioners?
In capacity as a-
In capacity.
Yeah, but no, 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 we're trying to say that we don't want to pay them to be sitting on the Housing and Homeless Committee, or Economic Development Committee. It should only be for the Planning Commission itself.
Well, shouldn't it be, for eligibility, shouldn't it say compensation shall only be provided to duly appointed members in attendance at a regular or special Planning Commission meeting?
There you go.
So just one thing to clarify, the code section states, may receive reimbursed, reimbursement as provided by the City Council for traveling and other expenses incurred while on official duty. So it's very, that's extremely broad, but we have a resolution, so we could-
Well, and that's different.
I take that to mean if they're going like to an APA conference or-
Like mileage.
Housing conference, or, yeah. That we wouldn't expect them to pay out of pocket for those things.
I also think that we need to strike the second part of that sentence, because we don't have alternate members of the Planning Commission.
Right, and we took that out of the resolution. Compensated for their services.
So with the council members, they're just going to get paid for serving on the Planning Commission, right?
It should be the same for the Mobile Home Rent Review.
So for the record, Resolution 7594 regarding compensation for Planning Commission members, section three eligibility will say compensation shall only be provided to duly appointed members in attendance at a Planning Commission meeting, and strike alternate members shall be compensated only when serving in place of a regular member, since there are no alternate members on Planning Commission.
Do we need to, City Attorney, do we need to clarify special or regular Council, Planning Commission meeting, or can we just say Planning Commission?
No, they're both.
Okay.
They're both meetings, so regardless.
All right.
Thank you. I think I should ask this question for transparency, because today I asked the city manager, where's this increase in money going to come from? And interestingly enough, I think it may have to come from a, some kind of imposition to the people on the mobile home parks, Mr. Singer?
For the Mobile Home Rent Review Committee, but not for the Planning Commission.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution, we're doing both in one, right? Okay. Adopt Resolution Number 7591 and Resolution, Resolution Number 7594, approving the compensation structure for the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission and the Planning Commission.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
There's a second, motion second. Any additional questions or concerns, or comments? See, none, motion carries. Sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, future agenda items, Mr. Singer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to point out, what's not on the forecast there is that we do anticipate a study session, most likely on November 5th, to talk about the oil museum content and options related to our artifacts and stuff. So, we'll get calendar invite out for that. I only anticipate it to be about an hour long.
And then, Mr. Singer, the item that I had asked for, I don't see it under future agenda items, so I would just request that it get onto the list, so that we don't forget that it had been requested. Thank you.
All right?